Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, July 15, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll call the meeting into order now, and the first item of the evening is, as always, is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. This evening, we have Reverend Tony Wood of Sharon United Methodist Church. Would you please come up?
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, you who have been with us throughout the beginning of time, be with us tonight as we make decisions for our county. Help us, O God, to see people as you see them. Help us to make fair and just decisions. Break our hearts, O God, for what breaks yours, and may we have a glimpse into your divine vision for our future. Guide and direct our paths so that we live in a community that is welcoming and inclusive for all people. And when the day is done, may we give you all the praise, honor, and glory, for you are a great God, and we ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen. Stand as we give the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have our Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest, Reiner from the County Attorney.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
2018, I did Public Hearing 1, PB 2314. So, six years ago, I did some work for Mr. Ennis. And 36 years ago, PB 2416, I worked for Ginger Morris. That was my first job as a child, so those are the only two for me. So, just want to put them all out there.
Thank you. Anything else from the rest of the board? All right. Next up is the approval of the agenda, and I believe we have one change this evening.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would add to an amendment to the consent agenda, a sole source resolution for the purchase of universal voting system devices for election systems and software, LLC.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Mike. On the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. First up, as always, is public comment. We do ask that the public limit their comments to matters other than those appearing on the agenda that are public hearing items, and limit their comments to three minutes. Now, I have one person signed up this evening, Debbie Swick. When you come up, please, if you would, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Debbie Swick. I live at 59 Deer Path Lane, Southern Shores.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I am the creator of banned balloon releases in North Carolina. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I know I only have three minutes, so I'm going to try and rattle off as much as I can. Balloon releases occur for many reasons. We have them released for weddings, graduations, gender reveals, and memorials. And there's latex balloons, which are made from natural, organic materials, but they have plasticizers and chemicals added to them. Mylar balloons are made from petroleum, metal, and plastics. The latex balloons take five to six years to break down. Mylar balloons take over 100, and the ribbon takes 150. Turns into microplastics, never goes away. This sadly is a balloon. You can see it says "I love you," broke free. You can see how it could replicate a jellyfish, which is common food for lots of our sea life. These ribbons get tangled around our seabirds. Number-one killer of shorebirds is this Mylar ribbon. The average balloon travels 1,300 miles. 1,300 miles. So, anybody living east of the Mississippi River releases a balloon, it's going to wind up on our coastline and probably in the ocean. Don't believe me? Ask any commercial fisherman how many balloons they pull out of the ocean on a regular basis. It's astronomical. They land in the fields, they land in forests, they do cause fires, which I am not versed on, so I do not go that way. I am worried about the environment, and I am worried about the sea life. I am a member of NEST, I am a member of mammal stranding and seal stranding, and I can tell you that there is an impact. Number-three killers, top-three killers for whales are human impact. It is boat strikes, it is fishing gear entanglement, and balloon and plastic ingestion. We have to do better as a people. This is a beautiful planet that we are gifted with. We have to make a difference. And this kind of a ban on balloon releases is two-part. There are intentional releases, the ones that I mentioned, and accidental releases. Those are the ones that occur from people tying them outside, signs, mailboxes, porches, or they break free because there's no weight. Once this floats away, it's unretrievable. And there is a statute in North Carolina, this does not become litter until it lands. So, you can imagine that if it wafts away in the Dollar Store parking lot, sorry, Dollar Store, or any other business, it is unretrievable. And that's what we want to eliminate. So, my quest to you is to implement ordinances. I am going to all 100 counties, and I am asking. I have been successful on the coast and gotten all of the municipalities to enact ordinances with a fine of $250 as the highest, 25 being the least amount, but I'm still working on them. I'm not giving up. Nothing good comes from a balloon release. There's nothing beneficial to it. I'm not asking for any taxes. I'm not asking for balloons to go away. I'm not trying to take anyone's livelihood away. I'm just asking you to enact a law that says it is illegal to let them go. There's alternatives. Plant a tree, blow bubbles, use natural confetti, scatter flower seeds. There are alternatives that exist, so I ask again that you consider the ban. Thank you very, very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. I don't have anyone else sign up this evening. Is there anyone else that showed up after we started the meeting that would like to speak at public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. Move on to Commissioner Comment and Commissioner Reports. I was a little remiss when we started the meeting. Ms. Kitty is not with us this evening. She is speaking on election integrity. As anyone knows, has been around this county, she ran our elections office for, Kevin and I were talking about that, 13 or maybe 14 years, and worked forever in the elections office, so is probably very apt to have her speak on election integrity. So, that is the reason she is not here this evening. And I will start out with Mr. Payment this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple things. Just want to remind everyone again that Albemarle Regional Health, we have a health department right next door to the courthouse over there, but it's more than just a health department. It's actually another, I guess if you want to call it an urgent care. You can go there, they accept any insurances, they have payment plans, they will, you can go get physicals, sick calls, they can do referrals for x-rays, they can write prescriptions. They just brought on a nurse practitioner, and they're hoping to keep them busy there. So, there's another alternate in the county. If you need to go there, again, you can walk in, they'll accept you, or you can call ahead. But please remember that there is another medical facility in the county that the entire community can use. Secondly, just remember our local fire departments, they're always needing help and support. I mean, we just recently had a fire south in the county that could have gotten worse, but it was contained relatively quickly with not too much damage. But we still have fires in the summertime, the accidents are still ongoing, volunteers are always needed, so if you can help in any way, or just go by and thank them, I know they'd appreciate it. That's it this evening, sir.
Mr. Jarvis?
Thank you. I just wanted to say a few words about the attempted assassination earlier this weekend, and I know many people find it scary and sad, and to me, it's very symptomatic of where we are as a country. But one reason I love this country, and many people do, is because we do have the freedom to express our views. No two people think exactly alike. As many of you know, I'm an identical triplet, and we don't think alike. And there is that old adage, if two people think exactly alike, only one is doing the thinking. The best way to bring about political change is not through violence and acrimony, is to organize, formulate your ideas, and passionately convince others of your viewpoint. And then comes in our vote. Elections are the best example of free exercise that this country has. Sometimes our viewpoints don't prevail, sometimes they do. In 112 days, we will have another election, and that day, we'll see winners and losers. And then that whole process is going to start all over again, because we're never far away from the next election. Election outcomes are only temporary, and that a firefighter is dead, and others, including former President Trump, nearly lost their lives, is a really sad commentary on where we are as a country. It's my hope, it's my prayer, that this occurrence will make people take pause and revisit their words, and choose a kinder path, and choose a more civil path. And it's my hope that regardless of the outcome of the next election, that we will be better as a country if we do check our words. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, anything for you to say?
Yes, kind of tag teaming on mics about the fires we've had recently in the county. I got to wait for an hour while they were battling the one in Lower Currituck Saturday. It was good to see that we had such, and that's all volunteers. We had a lot of people respond to that fire. In fact, I wanted to ask somebody there if there was any apparatus left. So, that was number one. But earlier, I guess after our last meeting, we actually had a lightning strike on Corolla Drive. The house was one-year-old, and fire was on the scene almost immediately. I mean, they limited, the damage was limited to the attic space above one of the bedrooms. So, the entire building was, the house was saved, and it's a million-plus-dollar house. Of course, no one tarp the roof, so that thunderstorms that we had the following week completely, they're tearing the whole thing down. So, I can't win for losing. But other than that, again, you know, if you have a heart to serve the county, and you have desire, the volunteers offer free training, and no cost to you whatsoever, and you get some really cool stuff to wear. Anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Kevin, what's on your mind this evening?
I got a few things, and I'm going to keep the clocks.
Three minutes.
We're going to hit the stopwatch and starter now. Kudos just to our public safety in general. We've had a lot of bad events, fires. We had a shooting in Ponderosa, where 20 of us were called out to work in pouring down rain. I directed traffic for five hours in the rain, as well as others. Those new raincoats that we got, they're not very good. I'm glad I had another one in my truck, and that one wasn't very good neither. But like I said, we do, in this county, have so many great things to be thankful for. Like I said, the guys came out, we solved that crime, solved other crimes, all in that one night. Dispatch did an amazing job. It was so busy in there. One of our deputies, like, literally sprinted like two football fields to render aid to a person that was shot in crossfire of two, I'm just going to say it, people shooting at each other, which, you know, over something stupid. But like I said, in our EMS, Fire Emergency Management, the guys all came out, and everybody, and like, it shut down for three hours because it was raining so hard, we couldn't collect everything we needed to collect in a crime scene because of the weather. And to make sure everybody was safe to go in there, and I felt sorry for the people. We had a lady with a special-needs child, she couldn't get to her home. You know, elderly people, people that are out working for a living can't go into their house because two people, one started it, but, you know, idiots are doing something, and an innocent person got hurt. So, but like I said, it's just, our dispatch was all over it, the guys, I literally was paying for food at Secure and got a phone call and said, "Come to work." So, smartest thing I did that night was grab those eight shrimp and threw them in a to-go bowl, and I did get to eat dinner. But like I said, it's, you know, we have good people, like I said, and that was that, the July 4 fireworks, you know, all the fire staff that went out and worked, we're at two minutes, I'm going to be under my time. Kevin Wetzel, local guy, I'm all for bi-local, support local, did a great job on the fireworks show in Corolla. We dumped the parking lots in under an hour. People behaved, I didn't have one complaint. Last year, we had lots. People weren't as nice. So, it's busy with all the different meetings. I know the county's doing great in the Parks and Recs and some of the baseballs, I'm on that. I had a Parks and Rec meeting, the animal shelter. We do have to touch base on Marion Gilbert's bench. We want to have a little thing for that. We brought that up in our meeting, so I'll have to send an email to Rebecca on that one. The, congrats to Helen Taylor. I work with her husband Jesse, he's my lieutenant. She got the Currituck County Middle School Principal. She is very organized, systematic, awesome, well-deserved, and you like to see people promote and move up in the county, so congrats to her. And I don't know the other gentleman, but the new high school principal, Grady Edwards, congrats to him as well, coming from Manio. Speaking of schools, one more thing. Peach Festival, July 27, awesome event, raised money. The Ruatton Park in Knott's Island from 10:00 to 6:00, July 27. I was asked to bring that up. Great event, don't miss it. And I do, like, with all the schools and the stuff that we had with everything, and then the meetings, and then the place was packed, I do think, and this, I brought this up, like, we need to possibly have maybe one every quarter or every three months, a meeting with them, and if it's an hour meeting with the school board, or if it's three of us, because you can't have everybody, two of them, they're, you know, just so we know we're on the same page as them, or not knowing they need this, this broke, that broke, whatever, so we're on the same page. And stay hydrated, it's hot outside, and if you work inside, don't complain about how hot it is outside.
Absolutely.
And that's it. And like, my payment, and the last thing, too, and it's disgusting, some of the comments that people put on social media for the attempted assassination of the president. Somebody died, you know, the two inches more to the, I mean, people should be ashamed of themselves. I mean, they comment that stuff, and I think that goes back to, what is it, mutual combat that they have in Texas and somewhere else. A lot of people just hadn't been punched in the face in their life, and that's why they go on social media and make their little comments, and, but that's it for me, and I'm under five minutes.
All right. Did you time yourself?
Yes, I did. 4:29.
That's what I got.
It's a tough crowd up here.
We were giving Kevin a hard time when we were eating before we came in here this night. All right. Owen, anything on your mind this evening, sir?
I'll just ditto what Selena said. It's very disheartening to read on Facebook and social media, people that have been childhood friends forever because they have political differences, their friendships are ruined because we do not have civility any longer. I mean, it's a dog-eat-dog world out there. Last thing is, it is hot. If you live next door to an elderly person or somebody in your community, it might be a shut-in, check on them, because it's supposed to be hotter tomorrow than it is today. And we're in a hot spell here, so just be good neighbors and look after one another. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, I'll go last. This past week, over the Fourth of July, I attended a meeting with the Corolla Home Owners Association. It was very good, had Sam Walker came in and attendance to moderate, I guess, and he put a little something out about that. I just wanted to thank them, Ben Steichlauer, they're a former county manager, and for inviting me over there to speak with them. That was civility in action. It was a great meeting I had with them, lots of discussion, and hopefully that continues with whoever takes my place in December. Well, we know who's going to take my place in December, there's only one person, but Mr. Tony hopefully will pick up where I left off. Other than that, I have nothing else, so I'll, we'll say we might have to recess in a few minutes. We have a strobe light happening over Rebecca's head this evening, so we're going to have to fix that one, someone gets here to deal with that. So, we may be taking a brief break in a few minutes, but until then, Ms. Rebecca, anything for you this evening?
No report this evening yet, but Leighton is here, so maybe after.
He just sent me a text, Public Works, so they're going to be here, and said if we could take a 10-minute recess when he gets here.
Yep, we'll deal with that when he gets here. Until then, how about you, Ms. Megan, anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Adjustment met on June 19, and they reaffirmed the notice of violation for the Jeep rental business going on in the single-family residential Outer Banks Zone in Corolla. And I attended the County Attorneys Conference this past week, and it was really great. They had some really great topics, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have attended that. That's it.
All right, thank you. All right, first up this evening is a public hearing. We have PB 2314, Ashbrook Estates. This is a continuance. Ashbrook Estates LLC is requesting a preliminary plat, special-use permit for 52-lot conservation subdivision located on the west side of Maple Road, tax MAC 52, parcel 12, in the Crawford Township. Just a reminder to the public that may be watching, that maybe didn't watch the last meeting, or the meeting that the applicant was at, they presented their case, we had public comment for that hearing, that is now closed. They needed to present some more evidence, so we deferred that to this evening so that they could bring back in some experts to offer testimony to support the necessary items to, for an SUP. What's that?
I think he's here.
You think he's here?
Take a break before we get into this, before they start.
Yep. Is he in? Yep, they're here, okay. So, we'll hold off just a couple minutes, folks, until we get this strobe light before I start twitching. So, we'll recess for a few minutes until we get this taken care of.
It's getting worse right now.
All right, we'll get this meeting rolling along again. I'll call the meeting back into order, and we'll pick up with PB 24, 23-14, Ashbrook's Estate. Had the applicant and their attorney on the way up here.
Or just the attorney?
Or just the attorney.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Hood Ellis, and I'm here on behalf of Ashbrook Estates. You guys want to come on up?
Get sworn in, right?
Want to swear them in?
Yes, sir, to see who showed up. I think we've.
This is Hunter Howell, and you know Jason Mazzell and Stuart Ennis.
Okay, I believe we swore all you gentlemen on the last one, did we not? We did not? Okay, just, all right. So, if you would, there's some babbles under there.
I swear again.
All right. You solemnly swear to tell the whole truth about the truth to help you, God?
I did.
All right, thank you.
Jason, I think we'll start with you. Mr. Chairman, I would introduce Mr. Jason Mazzell as a witness that we will tender as an expert witness with regard to the land use and the project, and you are a licensed professional surveyor.
Yes, sir.
And have been, so, how long have you been so licensed?
Ten.
Okay, and you've done multiple projects in northeastern North Carolina, and in particular, Currituck County.
That is correct.
Are you familiar with the land use plan and the UDO? Tell us about this project. Again, I'm under, designed it?
Our firm has participated in the layout and also subsequent meetings leading up to this point, one of which was a land use plan amendment that makes this project possible. We have gone through the staff review, planning board, the preliminary plat as presented meets all of the UDO requirements. The next step, obviously, after this would be construction plans and permits. The land use is allowance for 52 lots per the amendment that was done earlier this year, and that is what is presented. Currently, the project presented meets all of the UDO requirements for the lot size, which is a change that occurred after we submitted, but we do have the minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet that's been recently adopted by the county. Other items within the design will meet state and federal standards in addition to the county's UDO standards and drainage manual. Short of that, we've covered a lot of the basic information last time up. I'm happy to answer any new questions that commissioners or staff may have in regards to the project.
I have a few. On the maps, the ditches that exist in the fields, there are six of them that you're filling in.
Yes.
And I do have a concern, because obviously, the field drains now, and we know that those ditches work, and I get that because you've designed the layout with the loop around it. I guess, I just want some correlation here, how deep those ditches are currently. I know the swells on your maps are three feet deep in between the lots from the top of the swell to the bottom. Are those the same depth as the current ditches, and will they have the same effect?
So, the current cross ditches are roughly about two feet deep. They get a little shallower as you get to the back because the elevation's falling off. The main outlet ditch that runs kind of east to west coming from DOT's road, we are not touching that ditch.
Okay.
That's going to be out in the open space area on the Friends of Development. There's road drainage that goes through that today. All of that ultimately leads to the swamp, so that staying intact, as is any improvements we need to do along the way to help enhance that, we're certainly going to do. Property line swells are generally going to be shallow, they could start as much as a few inches, go as much as three feet at the lower, at the lower ends where they connect to the perimeter rear ditches. All that's going to get routed to a stormwater BMP. As you're aware, county has standards for how much rainfall event we have to hold on site before we can allow that water to leave the site at a regulated rate. So, the ditches will be somewhere between the, you know, six inches at start as the property line swell to as much as 24 to 36 inches at the rear lot, and then that's going to be a nice gradual slope, very flat slope to get to the BMPs, and from there, it'll hold the water for the design storm.
Okay, and I know there is several of the lots that are earmarked as shallow placement and provisionally suitable soils, and some of them will have to be filled with as much as 24 inches of fill.
Correct.
Most of them between 18 and 20.
Yes.
Once that fill is in place, is that when the swells will be measured out?
Some of that will be formed with the building pads as far as looking at the septic requirements. Those differences in fill are somewhat sporadic throughout the site. The fill amounts are usually a little more as you head to the rear again, it naturally falls off today. And those valuations are also based on current conditions with no regards to a grading plan or a stormwater provision. What we've seen with the Health Department in the past is, as we get into actually doing the formal design plans and grading plans and assigned elevations, sometimes those fill requirements come off when it comes time to actually pull the construction permit because we've incorporated that with the grading plan.
Okay, all right. And then I do have a question about the phasing for the schools, but I guess I'll wait till the presentation and ask that, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Do you have one?
No.
Okay, I do have one. As far as the sheriff's office shooting range, it's been there, it got relocated with the commercial park 15 years ago, 20? So, the, I just, like, as far as somebody's, you know, buying in there, whatever, I mean, that's something, obviously, that they're going to disclose of, hey, because it's not, you know, there's ordinances where, you know, as far as they can't noise after, whatever, but like I said, it's not used every day, but it is used by, oh, I turned my mic on, sorry. It's not used every day, but like, I know on the weekends, the 4/8 shoots there some, couple hours, and the, I believe the Hunter Safety Team has used it a couple times as well. I just, I want to make sure that's something. I just, I want to make sure that's something, if somebody buys one of those 52 lots of, oh my gosh, they're shooting, and we're having to look... Well, that's been there for a decade, so you can deal with it.
And notes can be placed on the face of the plat in the restrictive covenants to identify those things. In addition, we've left 100-some-plus open space on that side.
And there's a bunch of trees, too, so it's... I just wanted to make sure that was put on there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, they're probably not going to be presenting much, other than filling in the gaps that we had.
Okay.
To you and the public, so would it be appropriate to ask you when you think maybe the first house will be coming online? Because as you saw in the original report, the school is full right now. As you know, we have a new school being built, but nothing's being taken place. So that was some discussion last time, maybe just refresher for us.
I think right now, once we get this approval this evening, we'll go into our permitting phase, and that's going to take, between getting the design finalized, submitting that to the different state agencies, getting those permits back, and then resubmitting to the county, we're probably looking at at least six, seven months before we're even at a point where we can turn dirt.
Okay.
Now, beyond that, construction time period could be several months, just to get through that, depending on what time of year we actually hit. Good news is, for land developer and the contractor, the soils are pretty sandy, so winter time would not be out of the question there. I would say, Stuart might can answer this a little bit.
Okay, if it's more appropriate...
Probably 12 to 18 months.
Eighteen to 24.
Yeah.
Okay.
Less than 18 months. We're not ready to break ground, even if we're able to.
Before the first house would be sold, about 18 months?
Before it even got started, let alone...
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I thought that's what you said last time, I just wanted to make sure we had that in our memory. Okay.
Because I think with Tulsa Creek, we'll open up next fall.
Yeah, we're slated for '25, right? August of '25, I believe, is...
October.
October, excuse me, yes.
And with redistricting, I know some shuffling will occur with that, so we'll have to see what the final numbers come out when we get to that point.
Right.
Certainly can talk with staff about phasing. I said, infrastructure-wise, a good portion of that will have to go in just to support the stormwater elements, so, but we're certainly willing to talk with staff and the county about phasing.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything further from the board?
I was just going to ask, Mr. Chairman, that, Jason, you presented this, and you've worked through with the Technical Review Committee on all the appointments of the ordinance, and as far as you know, the project complies with the UDO and the land use plan and the adequate facilities, school plan?
That is correct.
Did you have something else to say?
I guess my question will be for Mr. Ennis.
Okay.
Was Mr. Ennis sworn in? I don't...
Last time.
I think he was last time.
Okay.
I can do it again if you wish.
No, I want to take notice that you were sworn in at the last meeting.
May I ask a question now? Just out of curiosity, will you be the builder, or are you just the developer?
Right now, we're planning on building. I work part-time with my... When I retire, we have one of the home in Ridge County, 2021, about six or eight years ago, and we're building one of our own. That's our...
Okay, so you project about six homes built a year?
I would hate to... Well, if things are going good and the economy doesn't crash, fingers crossed.
Well, I hope that doesn't happen.
Right.
Faster than that, but if I understand, or I think I understand, moving towards phasing, I'm happy to work with... Mr. Mike, we don't want to do all 52 at once, we're happy to split it in half.
So you don't have any plans of turning this over to this national developer that'll come in and bring their own crew and...
I can, under oath, right, I have no contract with any national developer or anything. I have not signed a contract with anybody.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Hometown.
Hunter, state your name for the record.
My name is Hunter Howell, and my office address is 412 East Chad Street, Cary, North Carolina, 27511.
What's your profession?
I'm a professional real estate appraiser in the state of North Carolina.
All right, are you licensed?
I am.
All right, and you're licensed as what?
I'm a state-certified general appraiser.
Okay, you're also a member of the Appraisal Institute?
I am, yes, sir.
Have you done appraisals similar to the one you were asked to do in this case?
I have, in numerous different jurisdictions across the state of North Carolina.
Okay, have you also testified before other commissioners and city councils in similar testimony?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tell us what you were asked to do in this case.
So I was engaged to study the impacts of the proposed development and how it could impact the adjacent properties.
All right, and what'd you do? How'd you go about that assignment?
Similar to other testimonies, I prepared a report in which I valued, projected the value of adjoining property and whether the project is in harmony with the general area.
Okay, and is that a process of gathering data that you find on public record and that sort of thing?
Yes, and in general, looking at the different demographics of the areas surrounding the general neighborhood of this property.
You did prepare a report?
I did, and I brought 10 copies.
All right, so we can hand that out.
Can you just give this to me, Anne?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Tacking my mic?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Hunter, why don't you just take the commissioners through your report?
Yes, so I'll just kind of generalize what the report kind of covers. The report looked at the surrounding land uses and residential values over the previous five years to determine the market demographics and trends. I also looked at other developments in the comparable locations in order to determine the effects of the developments in the area which they are located. The report analyzes a 1-, 3-, and 5-mile radius, looking at population, housing supply, and household income data over the last 10 years with projections over the next five years. This data is on page three of the report. The population within a 3-mile radius is expected to grow annually approximately 2.5% over the next five years. We also analyzed the median sales price, number of homes sold, and days on market over the last five years. The median sales price of homes over this period has steadily increased with days on market steadily decreasing to under 50 days in 2024. This indicates that there is a need for additional inventory within this market to keep homes In addition, in general, there is a positive impact to surrounding properties with this type of development proposed. As new residential developments come to areas, it enhances surrounding areas positively in terms of property values. Increasing home values increase the value available. Vacant land, as developers look to fill the void for additional housing within this market. This has been seen in several instances across the eastern part of the state. We looked at three large residential subdivisions with master plans in other formerly rural areas, and found they have tended to increase adjacent land values. This is on page nine of the report. The proposed development is surrounded by single-family residential subdivisions, vacant land, and Currituck County's mainland water treatment plant. It is common for single-family residential developments to be located in the same general area within a particular market. Typically, these developments are clustered beside each other along less traveled corridors in order to keep harmony of use. Larger commercial developments are typically located a short distance away along higher traffic corridors, limiting the number of vehicles passing the residential developed areas. Therefore, based on the proposed density of the development and these tendencies, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands.
So that's your expert opinion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that it will not injure the value of adjoining lands?
That is correct, sir.
Tell us, address the item about the next item.
So we also looked at similar developments in the media area to determine if this project is cohesive with the development plan, development pattern. This is on page five of the report. We identified four similar single-family residential subdivisions in the area, and based on these developments, we identified this project is cohesive and in harmony with the surrounding uses.
That, too, is your expert opinion?
It is, yes, sir.
Based on your study?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's all my questions, but Mr. Howell's happy to answer any questions that the commissioners have.
Anything from the board? Thank you. All right, thank you.
We would move to introduce the report together with the testimony.
All right, thank you, sir.
Stuart. Maury, you're familiar with Currituck County development regulations and land use ordinances?
As best as I can be, yes, sir.
Is it your opinion, as an owner, that you've complied with what the ordinances require of you?
Yes, sir.
All right, and y'all have worked, again, with the county staff, the Technical Review Committee, to meet the questions and items that they wanted you to address?
And continuing to, yes, sir.
Okay, and that's your intent from here on to then?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
I think that's all my questions, unless you've got something else you want to say.
Nothing that I didn't say already in the previous meeting, I'm not going to...
Just to reiterate, I guess, and so, Mr. Ennis, I guess, the only concern, rather, was with the schools, but you do understand that with the phasing, that we've got to comply with that, and it sounds like you're going to be working with that schedule, so...
Our intent is to work with that schedule. We're not going to be breaking ground tomorrow, this time next year, or sooner, or anything like that. And I just was speaking with Jason, we'll be more than happy to work with county planning staff to phase it out, if they want two phases or three phases. We are reasonable. We have a future here, we don't want to burn any bridges. We're going to take a very reasonable and prudent approach to it, sir.
There is no traffic impact analysis that was in the agenda packet. How would you allay the concerns of the citizens in that area? We've heard that it won't injure the value of the property. How would you assure them that it's not going to injure the value of their personal time and safety with an increase in traffic on the road?
Absolutely. I think that can be addressed very simply from TR. I voiced no concern. They had no issues or grievances, they never suggested that roads were inadequate in any way, and when asked for feedback, Jason, I don't think they said anything.
Yeah, I specifically asked if they were going to require any roadway improvements such as a turn lane or anything of that nature, and we've got no comment from them in regards to additional improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further from the board?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commissioners.
Thank you. All right, as I said, we've already had public comment for this, so we will not be doing that tonight. All that's left is deliberation and possible action on this. So at this time, I'll open the floor for a motion from the Board of Commissioners, or if there has any questions of planning staff, if anything else has occurred to any of the commissioners. All right. See some notes going, just give us a minute. Wait.
Ta-da. I wrote as fast as I could.
It's all good.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item 23-... The green light is on, 14 Ashbrook Estates subdivision. The preliminary plat special use permit, because the applicant has demonstrated that proposed use meets the review standards of the UDO. Specifically, the use will not endanger the public health or safety per the expert testimony, and absent any contradictory testimony this evening, the use will not injure the value of the adjoining and abutting land, and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, again, per the testimony provided this evening. And the use will be in conformity with the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan or other officially adopted plans to include land use policies 1.1, 1.2, 1.4, environmental policies 1.1, and environmental goal number one. And then the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public school facilities, again, per the expert testimony delivered this evening. The only condition I would place is that it would, in fact, follow the suggested and recommended phasing schedule, and so as to not exceed the county's ability to handle the new houses.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Before we move on, Kevin had brought up something, I wanted to make sure that it gets as a condition about noticing the new owners, that there's a shooting range next door, whether it's recorded on the plat or something to that effect.
Which I think that's something they would have to disclose. That's going to be disclosed during...
Through their... We still, like, if you locate next to a farm, operational farm, if there's no on the plat...
Right.
So I would suggest it would be a condition...
And that's fine, and I would like to also add, Mr. Chairman, that notice be provided on the plat and/or the deeds that the property, this subdivision, abuts the county's shooting range.
Do you have any problem with that?
No, I'll second that down.
All right, so now we have a second.
Just to be clear, was there a phasing plan provided by the applicant?
Well...
He said he would.
But that's, we probably, so there wasn't necessarily anything specific, other than a two-part plan, but I would say perhaps we could, the first house would not be, a CO would not be obtained until...
18 months.
For at least 18 months.
You good with that?
Okay.
18 months.
So basically, they can't build, they can't get a CO before 18 months.
They're resident for 18 months.
Second question, too.
Good?
Yep, we'll have a school, we should be good. Okay, so we have an amended, again...
I'll second that again, with the second amendment.
Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, carries unanimously, thank you all. All right, next up, PB 13-07, University Park. Request for an amendment to the University Park Plan Development Mixed PDM, master plan in terms and conditions to allow 39 townhomes, a storage building, and connect Amherst Drive to West Mobile Road. Parcel is located in Harbinger, tax map 131, parcel 97A, Poplar Branch Township. This is a public hearing, but it is not an SUP, so we won't have to swear anyone in this evening. We do have public comment, if there's anyone here to comment on this. With that, Ms. Jenny, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for conditional rezoning to, well, the property is currently zone Plan Development Mixed, and this is a request to amend that zoning, that master plan, on property located at University Park, which is along Currituck Highway and adjacent to Mobile Road as well. The property is approximately, well, let me just kind of orient you to that, in case you're not familiar. This is Church Road here, Mobile Road here, and Currituck Highway. The fire that occurred this weekend, I think, was somewhere around here in Lower Currituck. Zooming in a little bit closer, you can see that their surrounding properties are used as, across the street, vacant. To the south is also homes along Mobile Road here. To the west are low-density houses here, and then to the north, again, there's some commercial businesses and homes along the highway. The adjacent zoning you can see here is general business along the highway, transitioning to ag as you go to the west. The Imagine Currituck Future Land Use Plan and MAP currently designates the property as G3, which is mixed-use centers and corridors, which is considered a full-service area of the county. And this is the reason that this application is back before you this evening. When the developer originally came in to do this plan development, the goal or the hope was always that the land use plan would be amended, because initially, the land use plan was designated limited service in this area, it limits the density. So that was always the intent to either wait for the land use plan to be amended, or request a land use plan amendment. In this case, it turns out that this area was amended with the Imagine Currituck update. And so, this allows the developer to request additional density on the property up to three dwelling units per acre. Currently, you can see here, these are the units that are currently built on the property. Also, this piece, which is commercial, has also been developed with Elon Vacations, I believe now it's resort realty. This property currently has 39 townhomes, six buildings with six units, and one building with three units, and this request is basically to duplicate that on the property to the west. was designated limited service in this area with limits to density. So that was always the intent to either wait for the land use plan to be amended or request a land use plan amendment. In this case, it turns out that this area was amended with the Imagine Currituck update. And so this allows the developer to request additional density on the property up to three dwelling units per acre. Currently, you can see here, these are the units that are currently built on the property. Also, this piece, which is commercial, has also been developed with Elon Vacations. I believe now it's resort realty. This property currently has 39 townhomes, six buildings with six units, and one building with three units. And this request is basically to duplicate that on the property to the west here, and Mobile Road being here. So you can see it's six buildings with six units in each, and one building here with three units, as well as this proposed 30-by-50 storage building, which is generally like a warehouse for real estate business. And this connection here of Amherst Drive all the way over to West Mobile is also a change that originally was not part of the master plan. So that is what's being requested tonight. Again, it's G3 mixed-use centers and corridors, and these are the types of uses that are permitted in that area, mixed residential developments, multifamily development, office and institutional and light industrial facilities. The Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, here's some policies that apply. Land use goal one, which you see quite a bit, land use goal policy 1.3 to consider community character and establish visions for the community, some infrastructure and county services policies that apply. The planning board and the technical review committee recommend approval of the request because it's consistent with the future land use map of Imagine Currituck, and it's consistent with land use goal one, land use policy 1.3, and infrastructure and county services policies 1.1 and 3.1. And you can find this consistency, suggested consistency and reasonable statement in your agenda packet in the staff report. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anything from the board?
The connectivity for where it goes out to West Mobile Road, is that, I know there's a bunch of trees, is that buffer already in? And Norm, I'm not trying to bring up the word buffer, but is that buffer already, I know there's a bunch of trees there, is that...
It's touchable.
There are trees there existing, yes, and those will be retained.
Okay, that's why I was curious.
Applicants can speak to whether or not they plan on also adding additional trees.
Jenny, was NCDOT part of the TRC group that reviewed this?
DOT is included in TRC.
Okay, so they had the opportunity to comment, even though...
They did have the opportunity to comment, that's correct.
Anything further for Jenny?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Invite the applicant up, or whomever's going to speak for them, if they'd like to present something to us this evening?
My name is Norman Bebo, I am the owner of University Park. I live at 136 Egret Lane over in Harbinger. And it's actually 11 years to the day that I was in front of the commissioners back in 2013 for Phase One and Two, and Phase Three, which Phase Three we're coming to now. And actually, exactly what we talked about doing 11 years ago has come to fruition. We built 39 townhomes, there was a need for it, and there's even more of a need now for housing in Currituck, and exactly the people that we talked about having. We've got police in there, we've got school teachers. I don't think we have any fire right now, but we even have county employees. So it's, we have no issues there. I mean, it's a beautiful place. The county now uses us as a model for new developments, so we're looking forward to it. We probably won't get started on it until sometime after the first of the year, but we're looking forward to it, and thank you so much. If you have any questions.
I just have one. I know in the TRC comments, NCDOT, their only comment at this time was that you would need to obtain a driveway permit to access West Mobile Road. Has that been done?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, but it is your intent to connect to that road, so that would need to be done, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make a comment, I mean, we'd, like, far as the sheriff's office, I mean, we get zero, I mean, like I said, the place is ran, you guys do a good job running it, as far as it's, you know, it's very quiet, it's, like you said, it's a model for the county, as well as, like I said, it's ran well, and we don't, you know, we just ride back there to patrol, but like I said, it's a nice facility.
All the police cars back there help out, too.
That don't hurt neither.
You know, and just a comment, Mr. Bebo, that you are correct, and individuals I've talked to are very impressed with our development, the way it's been put together and ran, and I've heard a lot of good compliments about that development back there, and just want to thank you for that, so...
I cannot think of a single adverse comment I've ever heard.
No, so just thank you.
It was everything you said it was going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
As I said, this is a public hearing, the public is allowed to speak at this. I do not have anyone signed up this evening. Is there anyone that came in that would like to speak about this project to the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, I will close the public comment on this. And there's no further discussions, just go to the board for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 13-07, University Park Elon Plan Development Mixed Use Amendment because the request is consistent with the G3 transect of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal one, land use policy 1.3, infrastructure and county service policies 1.1 and 3.1. This conditional zoning request is, one, consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the land use plan or other applicable county adopted plans and the purposes of the UDO. Two, is compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the land subject to the application, and is the appropriate zoning district and uses for the land. It is reasonable and in the public interest because, one, it would result in logical and orderly development pattern, two, would not conflict with the public interest, and is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the UDO.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, carries unanimously, thank you. Next item this evening, do we need to, anybody need a break before we go? Any further?
I'm good.
Been at it very long, okay. All right, next up is PB 24-16, Walton and Ginger Morris. Request for an amendment to Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Four, Use Standards, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurement, to increase the number of special events from four to 10, and amend the definition of special event. Jenny, back again for this one.
Yes, thank you. This is an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance related to special events. We can start here, the first change is going to occur under the table of permitted temporary uses and structures. A strike through here of four occurrences per parcel, and inserting 10. It's a pretty simple change there when it comes to the language of the ordinance. And then there's a new definition of special event here, which is, the prior definition was a planned temporary activity required subject to review and approval of a temporary use permit by the county. And we, what we prefer to do is actually have definitions as opposed to regulating through definitions, so we've tried to take the definition of special event to make sure we're all on the same page about what constitutes a special event to begin with. So the proposed definition is a planned temporary activity unlike the customary or usual activities generally associated with the use of the property, intended to or likely to attract substantial crowds, and that may impact traffic or parking. Special events include but are not limited to sporting events, cultural events, musical events, charitable events, celebrations, festivals, fairs, carnivals, circuses, haunted houses, and communal camping. So that's a new definition of special event. Going back to this change to the number of occurrences per parcel per year, we did look back at some prior language in our ordinance, as well as some prior amendments to the ordinance. The board, some of the board at least, may recall back in 2013, 2012, there was concerns about the number of signs being placed out on the highway, being placed out, well, before special events, or just too many signs being placed for special events. And a text amendment was sponsored by the chamber, and it basically limited the signage that you could have with a special event, kind of gave some parameters about what, the timing in which you can put signs out to advertise your special event, to try to help with the sign proliferation. And with that specific text amendment, the other thing that occurred was that the number of events was changed. There was no real narrative or discussion as to why, but previously in the ordinance, it said that special events are limited to 14 total days per calendar year per parcel. And that was, that language was changed in 2013 to a maximum of four occurrences per parcel per year. Now we're, the applicants are proposing that be changed from four to 10. I think another thing that's interesting to note is a prior definition of special event. This is actually before the 2013 language, and that definition was circuses, fairs, carnivals, festivals, or other types of special events that, A, run for longer than one day, but not longer than two weeks, B, are intended to or likely to attract substantial crowds, and C, are unlike the customary or usual activities generally associated with the property where the special event is to be located. And I'd just say that the definition that we've proposed here is, it takes out the timing, the time constraint does leave that it has to be a temporary activity, doesn't limit it to the number of days per year, but it's occurrences now, and feel like it's similar to language that was in place previously.
So Jenny, what you're showing us here right now, that's going to take place, if you back up a screen, we were looking at the timeframe, that's going to take, because, I mean, number F, what is that timeframe referring to?
F is related to temporary keeping of livestock here in the table.
Oh, okay, never mind, okay.
So it's just H applies to special events here. So for special events, it will go from 10 occurrences to, or from four rather, to 10 occurrences per parcel.
Jenny, how about the timeframe, and I think you may have touched on it a little bit, far as, like, if they have an event, you know, before, like I said, I know, and I've talked to Chet about this, where is there an hour, you know, an hour of limitation for that day or something like that? Have we taken that out as well?
No, there's no, there's no limitation of hours, though, you may be, there was, and may still be for the noise ordinance, which is part of the code of ordinances, but...
What is our, what is our rodeo and all that stuff? We're bringing...
Bulls and barbecues in November.
Yeah, so that, I mean, so F doesn't have anything to do with...
Well, the county's exempt.
Yeah. Or county-sponsored events.
Or county-sponsored event.
Or not on couch property.
Okay.
The only reason why I bring that up on the noise, the noise ordinance, and I don't want to muddy the waters on that.
It is a part of the...
That's fine, okay.
If it says in there, like, for the four hours or whatever, and if, you know, I mean, if somebody has a six-hour event, and I don't think they're planning on having a 24-hour event or anything like that, but, I mean, like, where we could, you know, is it four hours, I mean, far as, they go four hours, and Megan's singing, and then she stops, and then Rebecca takes over, you know, does it, the times, or the noise?
So this is special event, it's not noise, it's a special event, there's a noise permit that's regulated through the code of ordinances, so if there's, if there's potential issue with the noise ordinance, that might want to...
We'll bring that up, we'll bring that up later.
Okay.
But, yeah, they're not, they're not related at this action.
No, right.
Correct? This is not related to this action.
Right, this is just ordinance, special events, right?
Well, in a special event...
Which a special event could have a noise permit associated with it.
Right, but this action's not related to that.
That would limit the noise portion of the event.
I'm not trying to muddy the waters off. We'll touch that in another event.
Yeah, that, so, yeah, this is just, you can have the event, it can be a very quiet event, depending on the type of event, if it's arts and...
You could have mimes, you could have mimes.
Right, mimes?
Mimes.
Could have a mime event, 10 of those a year?
Payments are a fan of that, so is...
Now, occurrence, is that one day or two days?
It could be, it could be two days, depending on the type of event. It leaves room for interpretation. Now, the board wanted to set, you know, that a maximum days...
We don't, we don't be having, we don't want to be having like a Woodstock.
Right.
Ten days of...
Right.
Like a fairer runs five days, six days.
Right.
So you don't want to limit it there.
To get, to have a special event as defined on the next slide, do they have to get a special use permit?
It's a temporary use permit.
Do they have to get a temporary special use permit, or temporary permit each time they want to have an event?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be reviewed, every event is going to be reviewed, correct?
Right, if it meets the...
It's not just going to happen 10 times a year, it's going to be reviewed, correct?
Correct.
Not a blanket permit.
Correct.
And we can tweak it.
Exactly, it can be amended if it needs to be. Okay, any further questions for Jenny?
I'm good.
Thank you.
I will finish my presentation.
Oh, go ahead, yeah, I thought you were done.
We jumped, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
I'm trying to get you out of here, Jenny.
I appreciate that.
Over five minutes.
Yeah, you beat my Mr. Comment.
So the land use plan, regarding this text amendment, there's some goals that may apply. Land use goal two, to carefully consider the design and location of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses to mitigate compatibility. Land use goal three, to support new and existing commercial developments that adhere to community appearance and design standards. And economic development goal two, promote sustainable tourism that improves quality of life for residents and preserves the natural and cultural resources of the county, so that they may continue to attract visitors to the area. And the planning board and staff recommend approval of this request, subject to this consistency statement that it is consistent with the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan. Now I'm done.
All right, thank you.
Six and a half minutes.
Right. All right, at this time, I will invite the Morse's up, or whomever they've elected to speak for them, if they want to just tell us a little bit about this. I think you guys are in pretty good shape as far as moving forward from here.
I'm Ginger Morris, and this is my son, Chet.
Good evening.
I think the biggest thing, I mean, I could give you the lowdown on the market, I don't know if y'all know the history, but we've been in business since 83. We were farmers, we grew corn, sweet corn, and what have you, and that's how we got into this. The greatest, coolest thing, and we do this with our field trips, with the little kindergarteners, Currituck was known for crop farming, behind his great-grandmother's house, Edna Morris, which was the Boswood property, which is where Uncle Ed's house is, which is now auditorium. Anyway, that house is a very, very old one, probably the oldest ones in the county. Right behind where the marsh goes into the bay, the boats would come up and fill up with watermelons, cantaloupes, potatoes, and they'd go north to Baltimore. And we were crop farmers in Currituck, so it was really kind of fascinating how we've evolved, and that's kind of where the farm markets really became what they are, starting with, I remember the lady that used to be in Grandy, but she kind of started it and gave us all, a lot of us are farmers, are the ones that we farmed and we needed an extra revenue, so that's kind of how it started. Ourselves, we're kind of dreamers, we see, we see what the potentials are, and what we have created is what we have. We are 40, 42 years, 40, whatever, years in. I started it when I was 23, I'm 64 now, so it's a long time. We've created a destination, not just a place for business and revenue. We've put a lot of our money back into the business. We have a high standard of service as far as employees. Most people would say as a business plan, we probably have too much help. The only way you can have service, especially with produce, is to have help. That's kind of who we are. The, one of the one things that I want you to realize is what we have is special, not just with the market, not just with the people that shop there. We are known, that's special in itself. But as far as the destination in Currituck, we're centrally located, we're kind of like this overlay with the airport. I was on the economic board in the 90s, so I know the goals of the airport and that Barco intersection, and what their plans were, making that a, kind of a place where people could fly in, and they were hoping even a hotel could be there, you know, one day.
We're all hoping.
We're still hoping, the hope is still alive.
Okay.
We're not doing that one.
Right, right.
But we also have the bay that is right across the street. We have swampland in the airport behind us, so we don't have a lot of neighbors. So as far as the impact of what it does to the community... So as far as the impact of what it does to the community, we have a huge parking lot. People think we're crazy for doing what we've done, but I don't know if you've been to our place on a Saturday and Sunday, it is packed. We have great access, we have honestly enough driveways, even with our house, where we have, especially big campers, we recommend them go out that way because it's safer than getting into the congestion. But that's, we are blessed to be, and to have what we have, as far as where the land's situated and everything that's coming our way.
My turn.
All right.
Public speaking is not my best, I've been a long time since I've been in her Miss Jarvis' class.
You are a good speaker, don't sell yourself short.
All right, the, keep it short, basically, our biggest reason for this is with, with just having to be able to do four special event permits, and like Jenny said, that every time you have to go and you got to get it approved and everything else, everything has to be set in place for each one, it's not just an overlay. As far as the amount of days, y'all can kind of come up with something with what y'all want to do there, I know that, y'all know that we've been doing music. I don't have time or energy myself to do more than one-day event, but a lot of music festivals around the country, around the world, the UK is doing them big time, it's three days is pretty much what they're, they're limiting it to, and not being a Woodstock-type thing. Me personally, I'm not in any near future of doing a three-day event. But the biggest thing is like this year, we're doing four concerts or three concerts, trying to work on our, our next big one. If it doesn't happen, we'll do like a big community, like we used to do for, on the farm, and we can do something like that. The biggest reason for needing more is not because we want to do 10 concerts or put anything extra like that, it's that I can't have anything else come about, and I can't let somebody come in, and if somebody wants to do a big wedding, that's, and they want to have 2,000 people at their wedding, well, the permits are by parcel and not by person. So I can't let them come do that because it takes away one of my permits. I had, speaking of the presidential rallies, I had two very large ones come to me, and I turned them down. For one, I don't like bringing in politics in the business, but two, it's going to take away my special event permit. And I was worried something would happen, like, did happen, unfortunately. But that's, that's our main reason. I've been talking to William, that owns, or that runs the airport, he can't do any type of airshow because of Maple, the housing and everything right there. And Mom, she's always wanted an airshow, so like, we could collaboratively do it where people could park, sit and watch. We own all the, all the woods all the way to the airport. So if we could figure out how to do an airshow, it's a collaborative event with the county. So just need more, more permits to really be able to do that.
One of the biggest concerns I have, though, is like a wedding event, I mean, is that the amount of people, or is it just because it's a wedding event? Is a wedding event 50 people, or is a wedding event 2,000 people? Because to me, I mean, we have thousands of people in our market every Saturday and Sunday, so what is the difference? But bringing in a wedding event, that was, that's kind of my only concern, because they're kind of low-key, they're, you know, so I, I have no problem with it being there, and if it's just another event, it just seems weird to have to get that permission to have somebody be able to come to your land and say, "I want to be married on your farm," you know? But that's neither here nor there, but that was my biggest question is, what is an event for the county? I know she clarified that.
Right.
It was very large, it was very large.
But I would think, you know, when, when we talk special events, it's something that's out of the ordinary, right? And clearly, because I drive by your market both Saturdays and Sundays, and it's jammed wall-to-wall, so I don't, like you're saying, a 50-person wedding, I don't think, I don't see where that becomes special.
No.
However, comma, I think if you start putting up tents for weddings and stuff, that's a completely separate deal, that you have to get a permit for as well.
That's building inspection, if you got any kind of size.
Tents going up.
Correct. So, so that kind of covers the safety associated with.
Right.
Those buildings, but I, if it's not, again, if it's special, that's where it would fall under this, and I think if you even had a question, you could call up.
Exactly, they've been great, they've been great.
I mean, the definition's pretty, pretty, makes it.
Pretty broad.
Pretty, pretty clear, you know, it's unlike the customary or usual activity that is generally associated with the use of the property. Weddings are not really special events, and Jenny and I were talking about that earlier today in her office, that, because we had problems with noise, when I first came on the Board of Commissioners, we changed the number of noise permits you could get because we're DJs coming to the wedding. You guys have enough land, that's not a big deal. But, you know, in Corolla, if you've got a 10-bedroom house, there's a wedding every single weekend, there's a DJ every single weekend, nobody gets any piece, so, again, it's, that is a normal activity, I think anyone, you know, everybody gets married sooner or later, hopefully, maybe, get some grandkids out of the deal, and, you know, some more helping hands at the farm, right? So, so I think you're safe there, just from a general, and if we need to, we can always amend it, if, if the staff feels like it needs tweaking, this, this language can be brought back for a tweak if it needs to be down the road, but it appears in the definition as it's presented this evening, that, again, that would be a customary use. So I wouldn't worry too much about that.
And if y'all don't know, August 9th, we have Marshall Tucker Band coming in.
Nice.
So, if you want a ticket, come see me.
All right.
You know, we could exclude weddings from the definition.
That would, that would take care of that, too.
And that'd be the same.
How would that affect it throughout the county, wouldn't, or not really?
Well, it's, it's, it's the same thing, it's a temporary activity unlike customary or unusual activities generally associated.
Because we don't require a permit for weddings at the Waya Club, do we?
They have to lease this.
No, and there is an exception in the UDO that allows for weddings at, where weddings would typically take place, reception halls, or similar facilities, it says.
Excluding.
So.
Off of this today?
Just exclude them.
I mean, if we've already got.
Weddings are exempt.
I didn't mean to cause a hiccup, Jenny, I was just, you know.
It's more of a dry raspy cough.
We should be thoughtful about, a little more thoughtful maybe about it, because think about a commercial zone property that's not really permitted as an event space, but we say weddings are not.
Well, like the chairman said, if we come across with a tweak, we can tweak it later.
Yeah, I think we let this.
Just let it go like it is, and then, and if we see something, we can always bring that back.
I'll say this, too, Chet's been awesome to deal with, far as like, he's had public safety, dispatch, EMS, law enforcement, everybody's been to his facility, toured the facility, showed us what they were doing, how they were doing it, and if we said, hey, we think you need to do this, you know, they, I mean, and Jenny can attest.
I would rather think that through a little bit more.
Great to work with.
Okay, so then, I, yeah, well, let's, let's leave it as it stands this evening, if the board wants to, to approve this, and if, if it becomes a problem, that'd be a good one for the first meeting in December.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. This is a public hearing, and the public is allowed to comment this evening, no one has signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this agenda item this evening? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment, and we're back to opening the floor for action on this. If there's no further, Jenny, anything further from you this evening?
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve PB 2416 Walton and Ginger Morris, request for an amendment to the UDO, Chapter 4 Use Standards in Chapter 10 Definitions and Measurement, to increase the number of special events from four to 10, and to amend the definition of special event as noted in the staff's report.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, with that, I'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll jump in on the sandlot mines. All right, everybody call the meeting back into order and move on with the agenda this evening. Next item up is PB 2417, the sandlot mine, request for a special use permit for 6.12-acre sandlot operation on property located at 7831 Kerituck Highway in Powell's Point, tax map 111, parcel three, and Poplar Branch. Jenny, you seem to be the person this evening, couldn't get Jason to do any.
Maybe sworn him.
We'll see him next time.
Get everybody sworn him.
Whoever's going to testify?
Oh, yeah, got to swear everybody in. We're back to ECPs. You all swear affirm, the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you.
So this is a special use permit hearing for a mine operation in Lower Currytuck at 73, or 7831 Kerituck Highway in Powell's Point. Here's a zoomed-out view of the property. This here is Bayview Road in Jarvisburg, this road is the road that loops around by Jarvisburg Elementary School. It's just south of Bayview Road. Trying to think of other, other landmarks, right here is Powell's Point Post Office, so it's just south of that, on the east side, the highway. Zooming in a little bit closer, you can see to the south here are some residential property, Calvin O'Neill Court. To the north is also some low-density residential and some undeveloped farmland. To the east is undeveloped farmland, and to the west, across the highway, is low-density residential. And you can see here the zoning district, the subject property is zone agriculture, which is a requirement for, a special use permit for extractive industries in the ordinance. Across the street is GB, and then to the north is GB. The land use plan classifies the site as G1, which is low-density growth, and you can see most of the surrounding area is also G1. Here is the, the map with the proposed mine. Just a little bit of background, you may, if you've gone past this site recently, in the past year or so, you've probably seen some activity going on on the site with respect to some, some digging. The county did issue a zoning permit for minor excavation in August of 2023. The ordinance does allow disturbance of up to an acre as an accessory use prior to establishment of a principal use, and so the applicants did elect to do that. So that was permitted, and there's currently a 12-foot-wide haul road associated with that permit here. They will not be using that road for the mine, as it doesn't meet the required 100-foot setback for the special use permit. So the property as a whole is, let's see, it's 25.54 acres, the proposed mine permit area is 16.06 acres, the proposed affected area is 7.67 acres, which includes the 6.12-acre mine, as well as the .87-acre sediment pond, which is the, the current excavation on the The proposed mining activities, excluding the existing haul road as I mentioned, all meet a 100-foot setback from property lines and 300 feet from Kerituck Highway. They also meet the required minimum 300-foot setback from adjacent residential dwellings to the excavation area you can see here. A new access road will be paved with asphalt here for a distance of 200 feet into the And a gate will be installed to limit access to the property. As you can see in your staff report, there's some data provided by the applicant regarding traffic counts, I'll let the applicant testify to that data. The mine will be reclaimed as a pond for recreational use when, when the mining activities cease and be restored. And the applicants will post a bond with the state, $7,000 bond with the state for reclamation of the mine. They will also provide annual reclamation reports to the county, as well as to DEQ, North Carolina DEQ. One thing I forgot to mention at the very beginning of my presentation is, the state permit was issued, and the applicant sent that to me on Friday, that was emailed to you today, and you have copies of that permit for the mine permit, as well as a de-watering permit at your, in your, at your seats. The mine will be excavated to an average depth of 30 feet, with a maximum depth of 35 feet below natural ground level. And the excavation activities include de-watering to the sediment pond that's here, that will overflow to the adjacent groundwater lowering ditch here, and through the wetlands and out to the North River. Also, properties have been located within, within use wells that are located within 1,500 feet. The applicant provided this map that has the 15-foot radius here from the property, there's actually two maps, and these are also in your agenda package, showing the properties that would be within that area. They also did a, an existing well survey, and they will, will be posting the required performance guarantee of $3,000 per well for all the wells within 1,500 feet. And they will also provide a guarantee, which is a notarized statement, that they will guarantee wells that are located between 1,500, all the way out to 2,000 feet, they will also provide a guarantee that they will replace those wells as well if they are, they are damaged, or they no longer, longer work. The land use plan, G1, classification is for low-density growth, and it specifies appropriate land uses and development types intended for agricultural lands and compatible low-density rural residential growth. Land use goal two may apply to the request to carefully consider design and location of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses. Land use policy 2.6, proposed residential development that would expose residents to harmful effects of incompatible land uses shall be minimized. Environmental goal one, preserve and protect the county's environmentally significant and sensitive lands. Environmental goal three, ensure protection and cleanliness of water resources throughout the county. Environmental policy 3.2, new development shall not impact groundwater quality and shall allow for groundwater recharge. And environment policy 3.3, quantity and quality of groundwater resources shall be protected and monitored to prevent pollution, saltwater intrusion, and excessive drawdowns. And with that, I think I failed to mention that the operator will also be putting in three monitoring wells on the site. The technical review committee reviewed the application and provides the following comments, that the mine operator shall guarantee replacement of the water supply of the 18 wells within 1,500 feet of the property to that of equal quality and quantity of the in-use well, and a performance guarantee in the form of a cash deposit shall be established in the amount of $3,000 per in-use well, which is $54,000 total, and that's per the ordinance. In addition, the property owner will provide 100% performance guarantee to repair possible damage to homeowners' water well systems, and the nine additional developed parcels located within a 2,000-foot radius of the excavation area. The applicant shall meet the UDO standards for extractive industry. The special use permit shall be valid for the same period, permit period as the state's mining permit, not to exceed 10 years, and the existing gravel driveway within the 100-foot setbacks shall not be used for mining equipment or hauling. And I will leave you with the special use permit review standards, and I can try to answer any questions the board has at this time.
Jenny, I do have a question, does the county have any records of those wells in that area that are shallow wells? Because there are some shallow wells that are as low as 15 feet that they're using for their domestic water. Is there any records on file?
There, there was a full water well survey for those, I'm not sure that they were able to verify the depths of all those wells.
Because I know some of the older wells in the south of the county, because of Water Table, so there's some wells as shallow as 15 feet, okay?
How about the location of the monitoring wells? I mean, like I said, there's three, obviously.
Right by the highway.
So what page is that on? Yeah, they're near, yeah, they're near, yeah, they're near the, up near the front of the property in the corners.
Here and here.
Okay. All right.
Jenny, ma'am?
Good, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. This time I'll invite the applicant up, the representative, Mr. Vonnell, I guess you're to see him.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I am here as legal counsel for the applicant, Mr. R. Jerry Thompson. He, the property that's been described by Jenny is owned by the Lynn Van Luret Trust, LLC, which is managed by Mr. Brian Newman. So Mr. Thompson here is the lessy, as stated. However, I would like to, would like to call up Mr. Ken Elliott, please, with Elliott Consulting.
Good evening.
Please state your name for the record, please.
I'm Ken Elliott with Elliott Consulting from here in Currituck County, living in Ireland.
And Mr. Elliott, what's your industry? What are you, what's your occupation?
I provide permit consulting for various mine operators in northeastern North Carolina. Work as a liaison between the mine operator, state and federal government, to provide compliance with their ordinances and permit regulations, including coordination and monitoring of their, of the mine's operations and personnel. We currently manage sixty mines, mines in northeastern North Carolina, excuse me.
How long have you been doing this type of business?
Thirteen years.
Okay. Has most of your experience been here in Currituck County and/or eastern North Carolina, or in other areas?
Everything from Pitt County eastward is my area.
Familiar with the environment out this way, then, fair to say?
Yep.
And did you help Mr. Thompson in preparation of the application for this special use permit?
Yes, sir. We designed the project according to the ordinances, the state ordinances, the county ordinances, and we prepared all of the paperwork.
Have you prepared such an application before on behalf of others?
Yes.
All right. At this time, given the experience that Mr. Elliott has explained to you guys, I would like to proffer him as an expert in the field of environmental consulting.
Any objection from the board? No, sitting down, thank you. What's up?
All right. And now, Mr. Elliott, I'm going to turn it over to you, since you know a lot more about this than I do. I would let you present your application, understanding that we do have an expert here to discuss effect on adjoining property values. But I will let you go through the other items that the board is very interested to hear about, and that we need to meet to get the application passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I'm not going to go through all of the specifics that Jenny has already gone through with you, just that it's going to be a six-point-one-two acre excavation located in only a twenty-five-point-five-four acre parcel. Some of the criteria that we need to talk about in the details include wetlands. There are no wetlands on this parcel. The closest wetlands are six-hundred-and-forty feet away across Keritoke Highway from the site. The depth of the mine will be thirty feet, with a thirty-five-foot maximum. We did receive final approval for the state mining permit last Friday on July the twelfth, and we have received an approved de-watering permit from DEQ that was issued back in June The discharge water, excuse me, just discharge water usage has been registered with the state, with the Division of Water Resources, back in February of this year. And then again, we got the one-acre pond permit in August of last year. Regarding adjacent owner notifications, for the state permit, adjacent owners were notified on December fifteenth twenty-three by return receipt certified mail with standard state notification forms and maps of the proposed project. In preparation for the special use permit, we were required to have a community meeting, and the community, community meeting was scheduled for March twenty-fifth of this year at the Powell's Point Senior Center, and also by Zoom on March twenty-seventh. All landowners of parcels within fifteen-hundred feet of the Lynn Van Luret parcel were notified by certified mail on March fifteenth of the three proposed community meetings. All the, all the Currituck County Commissioners were notified by certified mail on March fifteenth as well of the meetings and invited to attend. The first community meeting was held on March twenty-fifth at the Senior Center. It was attended by five nearby parcel owners, TR Equipment Company personnel, and two staff members from Currituck Planning. The project development was, development was explained in detail. Questions from attendees were answered, and no major concerns were expressed. The second community meeting was held by Zoom on March twenty-seventh, ten a.m. There were no attendees other than TR Equipment Personnel. The third community meeting was held the same day at four p.m. with one attendee in Virginia who attended. The project development was explained to her, and there were no major concerns expressed. A summary of all of the meetings was provided in your special use permit application packet. NCDQ and Currituck County UDO setbacks and buffers. There are two types of buffers that miners have to abide by. Undisturbed buffers are setbacks where no mining activities of any kind may occur except for access to the mine site, and unexcavated buffers, where mining activities will include haul roads, berm, stockpiles, and erosion settlement control measures. The state requires a fifty-foot minimum undisturbed buffer between mining activity areas and wetlands or waters of the state, and a minimum twenty-five-foot unexcavated buffer between undisturbed areas or property lines and the excavation edge. The Currituck County UDO requires a one-hundred-foot setback to property lines and three-hundred-foot setbacks to residences, businesses, churches, public highways, or easements. TR Equipment Company is meeting all of these setback requirements for this project with property line, highway, and residential setbacks. For erosion and sediment control, they are going to pave a two-hundred-foot-long access road entrance from Keritoke Highway. They will be installing and constructing a two-foot-tall by fourteen-foot-wide sand berm around the seven-point-six-seven acre affected area inside the unexcavated buffer. Therefore, all rainfall and storm water in the affected area will drain internally to the excavation. There will be no external drainage, where the storm water will be treated for sedimentation removal before leaving the site through the sediment pond overflow. The operator will keep a weekly log of inspections of erosion control measures on the site. De-watering is always an important topic with mining in our area. De-watering of the excavation is necessary for the operator to achieve full permitted depth excavation safely and allow for proper construction of pond side slopes. The existing zero-point-eight-seven acre pond on the property will be used as a sediment pond. The sediment pond will have a four-foot-tall berm surrounding it with a half-pipe flashboard riser water height control device on the north end of the pond. This will maintain the maximum height in the pond of one and a half to two feet below the peak of the berm. That pond itself will be at a maximum depth of twenty feet. There will be a minimum zero-point-eight-seven acre, acres of surface area in the sediment pond to allow adequate sedimentation of the discharged water before it leaves the sediment pond through the overflow. Water will be pumped from the excavation into the sediment pond. Overflow will drain through a discharge pipe from the overflow control device to an existing ditch which drains westward five-hundred-and-ninety feet to exit the parcel. The ditch will have riprap outfall protection at the overflow discharge point. After exiting the property, discharge water will flow through an existing culvert under Keritoke Highway, and then by ditch westward into wetland swamp, draining two miles through the swamp and marsh to the North River. The de-watering pump itself will be located between the excavation and the, and the east corner of the sediment pond. To mitigate noise, the pump will be surrounded by sand berm when it is above ground, or when it's, or it will be located below ground when the pump, when the pond is de-watered. The pump will operate at an idle speed of eleven-hundred to twelve-hundred RPMs. Required monitoring for the de-watering process, the state requires quarterly sampling of sediment pond discharge. Water samples will be taken at the sediment pond outfall and from the discharge ditch at the exit to the permit area. Since the North River is classified as SC title saltwater, discharge from the sediment pond will be tested for pH, total suspended sediment, turbidity, salinity, and enterococcus per state and county requirements. Samples taken will be tested at Envirochem Laboratories in Manio in Wilmington, who is a state-certified laboratory. Results will be reported quarterly to Currituck County Planning and Inspections, and to NCDQ Demler Stormwater Program. Any analysis results outside of state or federal specification will be addressed per Stormwater Program guidelines, which may include alteration of the mine de-watering process. Monitoring wells, there will be three groundwater-level monitoring wells installed on the south and west sides of the permit area, at one-hundred-and-fifty feet, two-hundred-and-ninety feet, and three-hundred-and-ten foot distances from the excavation edge. Wells, the wells will be located between the excavation and the closest adjacent homes and businesses to the east, west, and south. At this time, groundwater levels on the Lynn Van Luret property have been measured in the existing pond to be approximately six-to-eight feet below normal ground level. Upon approval of the special use permit, the monitoring wells will immediately be installed to establish groundwater levels in the permit area. During mining and de-watering operations, groundwater levels will be measured monthly through the monitoring wells for the life of the permit. Results will be reported quarterly to NCDQ and Currituck County Planning and Inspections. Performance guarantee. The operator has identified eighteen residences or businesses, or businesses within fifteen-hundred feet of the proposed excavation with active groundwater supply wells. Per the UDO, the operator will provide a bond of three thousand dollars per active well, for a total of fifty-four thousand dollars, to provide a funding source that will be used to repair or replace any groundwater well or pump within fifteen-hundred feet of the sandlot excavation, if it is damaged by de-watering activity at the, at the site. In conjunction with Currituck County Planning, the operator has identified an additional nine residences or businesses within two-thousand feet of the proposed excavation with active groundwater supply wells. The operator voluntarily guarantees to repair or replace any of these groundwater wells or pumps if they are damaged by de-watering activity at the site. The operator will file a signed performance guarantee with Currituck County Planning, Planning and Inspections to the above effect before de-watering commences. Noise abatement. The closest residence to the proposed mine site is located eight-hundred-and-forty feet from the mining activity and eight-hundred-and-ninety-three feet from the de-watering pump location. Estimated noise levels, levels from the de-watering pump and equipment operation at the sandlot were calculated by comparison to an active mine site in Jarvisburg with a de-watering pump and in mining equipment in operation. Noise levels were found to be forty-three decibels at eight-hundred-and-ninety-three feet from the de-watering pump, and forty-four-point-two decibels at eight-hundred-and-forty feet from other mine activity. These noise levels are below the maximum sixty decibels allowed in Currituck Code of Ordinances. Noise levels were also measured along Keritoke Highway at the same distances from the highway as, as the closest residences to the mine site. Noise levels along Keritoke Highway were found to be sixty-five to sixty-eight decibels. The comparative noise levels taken in Jarvisburg were measured across open land or water with no screening. Mining and de-watering activity at the sandlot will be behind six-foot-tall berms and natural foliage screening. TR Equipment estimates the noise from the de-watering pump and equipment is expected to be less than that from the existing traffic noise on Keritoke Highway. Visual screening. There is existing full-growth foliage and trees in place along the north, south, east, and west sides of the perimeter boundary. There is an existing thirty-foot-wide strip of full-growth foliage and trees in place adjacent to the Keritoke Highway right-of-way, consisting of canopy trees, undisturbed trees, and shrubs, forming an, forming a solid visual screen. All foliage will be maintained by the operator during the life of the permit. The operator will also construct an eight-hundred-and-fifteen-foot-long by six-foot-tall by thirty-eight-foot-wide solid sand berm with ground cover between Keritoke Highway and the mine activity area for additional visual and noise screening from nearby residences in Keritoke Highway. Reclamation of the mine site at the end of excavation. After final excavation, the de-watering pump will be shut down and removed. The separation berm between the sediment pond and the main excavation will be removed by excavation. The, the two ponds will be joined together into one six-point-one-two acre pond. During reclamation of the mine site, the operator will perform final grading of excavation slopes, which will be at a three-to-one or flatter slope above the pond water level, two-to-one or flatter below water level. The operator will construct a low eight-foot-wide by one-foot-tall erosion control berm around the perimeter of the pond to maintain erosion control of the side slopes. The operator will grade and level all affected areas in the permit area. Stockpiles and berms will be removed, and their areas will be graded and leveled. Ground cover will be planted or installed over all affected areas. A farm path will remain around the pond. The remaining pond will be used by the landowner for personal recreational use and as wildlife Security, there will be one paved entrance for mining equipment and trucks to the mine site from Keritoke Highway. This entrance is located exactly midway between the two adjacent parcel lines of this, of the mine site parcel. The entrance will be four-hundred-and-sixty feet in either direction from the adjacent parcel lines. The paved entrance will have a locking gate to prevent inadvertent public entry, which will be located eighty feet from Keritoke Highway right-of-way per NCDOT requirements. State inspections, NCDQ Demler Land Quality Inspector is usually coming once to twice per year unannounced. NCDQ Demler Stormwater Program inspectors do the same, usually once to twice per year unannounced. State reporting, the state Demler Land Quality requires annual reclamation reports every August documenting the amount of excavation and other mining activity, plus reports on written responses to state inspections. The NCDQ Stormwater Program requires quarterly and annual discharge monitoring reports, including quality analysis of de-watering discharges. The operator will be, will have on the premises at all times a stormwater pollution prevention plan. This will be kept to monitor erosion and sediment control measures, employee responsibilities, and general operation. This plan is available to NCDQ inspectors. The NCDQ Division of Water Resources requires annual reports on the amount of water usage or discharge at the mine site. Hours of operation of this mine will be Monday through Saturday, sunrise to sunset, except for this, no mine operation on Saturdays from Memorial Day through Labor Day, and no mine operations on any Sunday year round.
Yeah. I caught that.
That was a Saturday, from sunup to sundown on Saturday?
Yes, sir.
He said, he said on Saturdays, not Sun, Sunday you'll be closed, but Saturday, sunup to sundown.
Saturdays are closed, oh, between Memorial Day and Labor Day.
Memorial Day and Labor Day, okay.
Okay. Got it.
That's per UDO.
Okay.
Criteria for the Board of Commissions to approve the special use permit, that the use will not endanger the public health and safety. The excavation site is three hundred and fifty feet from Kerituck Highway. The mine access road intersects Kerituck Highway at a ninety-point-six-five-degree site angle. Kerituck Highway at the Lindblad property has a current annual daily average vehicle traffic rate of nineteen thousand vehicles per day. That's an edit from the information which you had previously received, which was taken in two thousand and twenty-one. This is current. Seven hundred and ninety-one vehicles per hour, nineteen thousand vehicles per day. The mine operation is expected to have an average traffic of twenty vehicles per day, one to two per hour, with an additional two to three vehicles during peak operations. The closest residence is eight hundred and forty feet from mine activity and eight hundred and ninety-three feet from the de-watering pump. Noise levels will be less than that generated by traffic on Kerituck Highway. Erosion and sediment controls measures will be in place around all active areas of the mine. All stormwater will drain internally to the excavation. The mine de-watering discharge will be monitored and tested quarterly for pH, total suspended solids, turbidity, salinity, and enterococcus, and reported to the state and county. In order to determine water supply well depths in the area, groundwater well surveys were sent to all landowners within fifteen hundred feet of the excavation requesting information on their wells. The operator is providing a performance guarantee to all landowners within fifteen hundred feet of the excavation and voluntarily to two thousand feet to repair or replace groundwater wells or pumps if they are damaged by de-watering operations.
Mr. Ellis, let me, let me stop you for a second. I've got a question.
Sure.
You've been doing sand mines for a while. We've established that. How, how frequently did you run into problems with people's wells?
Good question. Only one time from a previous operation. The, the operator went ahead, he could have faulted because I don't believe that the, the problems were with de-watering. There were some shallow wells, but he did the right thing, in my opinion, and he went ahead and replaced the wells of those who asked for them.
So, in this case, if a well runs dry, if it's a shallow well, you would just come in and basically punch a deeper well and be the remedy? You would just put a deeper well in as a remedy, basically?
That would probably be the, the easiest solution, yes, sir, and replace the pump if it was necessary.
Sure.
And three thousand dollars would cover the cost of that?
Probably not.
Fifty-four, fifty-four thousand dollars would.
Not three thousand per property, and that won't, not for a deep well, new pump, electrical, the lines, depending how far you go.
That would entail all of the mines in the area.
Well, if we're going to be on the wells, then did, did you incorporate any geothermal heat pumps that might be affected by this?
Heat pumps?
Yes. Geothermal?
Yep, yes, sir.
Okay, so what if somebody has a geothermal heat pump and their well runs dry and they have no heating or cooling? How are we going to take care of it?
Anything that's affected by de-watering.
Well, you don't have, you just say domestic usage. You're not talking about utility usage. So, so would you, would you go deep wells for somebody who has geothermal? Would that be a guarantee in here as well?
If, if they are losing well pressure due to, due to the de-water, in other words, that they cannot.
If they, if there's a shallow well and the water table goes below that and they cannot suck the adequate water for the geothermal heat pump system or their domestic water, either or, right now, this is, this is addressing domestic water.
Yes, sir.
It's not addressing any type of utility equipment needed water. So, those individuals could possibly be down without heating and air conditioning or domestic water. Would you shut down the plant until that's resolved?
That's, that's a very good question, something I will keep in mind and discuss. But if it's, if it's related to not being able to pump enough water for their supply, then they'll be covered.
Then, then we'll have to change some language in here, I think, to cover utilities. Was that, is that, do we have to do that as well versus just domestic uses water?
You can add a condition.
Okay. Because that's a possibility, and have, and have you tried to get a well company here lately to put a well in? Do you know how long that wait is? I've, I've heard up to six months.
Mm-hmm.
So, if somebody has a problem with their well.
In an emergency situation.
What would you do in an emergency situation while you're waiting for a well company for maybe six months?
I'd find another well company.
Well, I, I deal with well companies all the time. They're not that available.
Dying breed.
They're a dying breed out there. I deal with, so I'm trying to find one right now. You're about a three to six-month wait time right now.
If they're not available here, I'd go elsewhere.
Okay.
But yeah, I, I see your point there on, on all of this, and if it's, if it's related to, I mean, if it is a shallow well.
And then there's a lot of them around here because I have a fifteen-foot, I have a fifteen-foot well in my place.
There's a majority of twenty-foot wells down in Lower Currituck. But again, the, the, we'll find out how deep the groundwater level is officially there. I'm anticipating six to eight foot.
Hey, it's, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, that's what I'm saying. If, if something happens and we go below these shallow wells, you could be affecting a lot of.
My experience has been in comparing base water levels in the monitoring wells and then during de-watering operations. Once you, once you get out five hundred feet from an excavation, you have virtually no, no drop in the water table levels. It might drop a foot, but that's going to be about it.
And so.
We've not, we've not had anything.
So, I, I've got the, the map, I guess, that's up on the screen, and it appears that the house closest to Kerituck Highway on the, let's see, southwest corner, Richard F. Davis II. The map in the agenda packet says three hundred feet.
Yes, ma'am.
Excavation edge.
To the edge of mining activity. That's the outside berm.
The excavation edge, is that the same thing?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
The excavation edge is.
My map is incorrect. Is that, the map in the agenda packet is not correct, then? The one that is on page two forty-two, it says, oh, sorry, different page. It, it's got a note, a line drawn from the corner of the excavation edge to Richard F. Davis, and it says three hundred feet. Is.
That line goes to the edge of mining activity, which includes the twenty-five-foot unexcavated buffer. The, the excavation edge is that inner line there.
Okay.
The UDO specifies no mining activity within three hundred feet. So, that's, so the excavation edge itself is slightly further than three hundred feet.
Okay. So, it's from the edge of the?
Inner line, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, it's a berm, it's the outer edge of the berm?
The outer edge of the berm, the bottom of the berm?
Yes.
Okay.
And it looks like that berm is estimated to be about fourteen-foot wide?
That's correct.
Okay.
That the use will be in conformity with the land use plan. This site is located in the Point Harbor Land Use Plan subarea. It's designated as limited use. Mining is permitted in the limited use area. The parcel is in an agricultural zoned area where mining is permitted with an approved special use permit. The proposed mine operation is believed to be in compliance with the land use plan. That the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide public services. There will be no permanent structures or no permanent needs for electrical, water, or phone on this site. The site will have adequate all-weather, have an adequate all-weather entrance to the mine site for emergency vehicles if needed. The mine site is, or the operator does not expect to have any impact on county public services with this project. That the use will not injure the value of adjoining properties that will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The proposed sandlot mine is intended to serve the growing residential and commercial area of Lower Currituck County. Sand is a required component in many types of residential and commercial construction, and the location of the proposed mine will benefit the local community with a reduced cost of this commodity due to lower transportation costs. That's all that I have for you right now. We have appraiser testimony that will be presented to you by Mr. Kim Tate of Tate Appraisal and Consultation Incorporated.
Mr. Ellis, if I may, just for the record, just to make this as clean as possible, so is it your expert testimony that the proposed use, just a yes or no, will not endanger the public health and safety?
It will not.
Is it your testimony that the proposed use will be in harmony with the area in which it is located?
Yes.
Is it your testimony that the proposed use will be in conformity with the land use plan or any other officially adopted plan?
Yes.
And is it your expert testimony that the proposed use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities?
It will not.
Thank you. No questions for me then? I'll turn it over to you, if you all have any.
Anything further from Mr. Ellis? All right. Thank you, sir.
So, for the last item concerning effect on adjoining or abutting lands and their value, I would ask Mr. Kim Tate to come forward. Mr. Tate, would you please state your full name for the record?
Kim Tate, ten ninety-three Water Lolly Road, Coinjock, North Carolina.
And what, what's your occupation?
I'm a professional real estate appraiser.
All right. Do you have a business?
I do, Tate Appraisal and Consultation.
Okay. How long you been appraising properties?
Forty-two years.
Here in the, on the Outer Banks area for the most part, Currituck, Manland?
Currituck, probably for the last thirty to forty years, forty-two years, including from, from the North Carolina state line up into Virginia and DC.
And as far as mines or what we're talking about here, this sandlot mine, have you ever given any type of appraisal before or issued any form of expert opinion on the value or in expert testimony scenarios concerning landmines?
I have, here in the county.
All right, and here in this county?
In this county.
Okay. With that being said, I'd like to proffer Mr. Tate as an expert in real estate appraisal.
All right. I'll accept. Thank you.
So, now, Mr. Tate is, I'm just going to ask you this question, so I don't have to come back up. Is it your expert opinion that the proposed use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands?
That's correct.
All right, and you can explain a little bit more. And I believe, Madam Clerk, did you, were you able to hand out the vote?
She did.
Okay, thank you.
She did receive that. Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I've had the opportunity to speak to you before, particularly on mine opportunities here in the county. Just to give you a quick synopsis of what we did, I'm a, I'm a data and, and research person when it comes to finding information on properties, impacts. The best way to do that within the county or anything is to, to look at competitive projects that have, that have occurred adjacent to residential development. I spoke to you, I think it was January of twenty-three, concerning the Thrasher Mine Pit up near the Newtown development in Moayak. I went back and took a look at that information, updated it to current because everything's dynamic, things change, looked at things again. Looking around at this property, trying to find adjacent development, the south end of the county, and, and you, you all know it better than I do, but when you speak of the county, people tend to say North Currituck, Moayak, mid-county, and southern Currituck. Mid-county to southern Currituck, kind of, I kind of define that as the courthouse south, just because that's, for some reason, everybody seems to draw a line at North Currituck at the two-seven-nine-five-eight zip code.
South Currituck is south of Coinjock, so.
Yeah. And somewhere in between there, somewhere in between there, there's a gray area perhaps, but there's, there's a different level of activity given where you are in the county. And being able to measure activity, south end of the county tends to be less developed, tends to be more stable, less turnovers, less development of properties coming in that you can measure turnover of sales to be able to look at. A lot of properties tend to stay in families, a lot of properties tend not to turnover frequently. These, the mines in the southern end of the county tend to not be adjacent to development, they tend to be adjacent to farmland, vacant land, some sporadic uses, you know, commercial stuff along the highway. We took a look around there, did not find anything, had to reach out to further areas. We had to come up, once again, had to come up to Moayak because there's sand pits up in Moayak that are operating, development going on around them so that we can measure the impact, if there is any, of, of adjacent development. We took a look at the Countryside Estates neighborhood, which was the neighborhood, I know you all are familiar with it, it's right there, kind of behind Tractor Supply, adjacent to Moayak Sand Company. Moayak Sand Company is a very large sand mining operation, they have trucks running in and out of there regularly, have been for years. That development came online in like two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, adjacent to it. Countryside Estates was developed. A lot of those houses have had the opportunity to sell and resell. That gave us the opportunity to, to take a look at those sales and find sales that had not been altered and sort out any sales that had had any kind of major changes to them that could have impacted the value. You know, if there was a pool added, throw that sale out because there's something outside of just the market activity. We found six sales in a timeframe of January twenty nineteen through June of twenty twenty-three, sales and resales of the same property, to use them as match pairs to see how their rates of appreciation compared to the overall average rate of appreciation in Currituck County over the same timeframe. The, the average annual appreciation rates of these resales ranged from five-point-four-nine percent per year to nineteen-point-eight percent per year. This on a straight-line basis, no compounding. The midpoint is about twelve-point-six-five percent, the mean is about eleven-point-six-five percent, and the median is about eleven-point-eighteen percent. So, you're somewhere, you know, in the, the central tendencies, put you in the eleven to twelve percent range. Appreciation rates of, of the average value in, in all of Currituck County using MLS services, taking into account all of Currituck County from twenty seventeen through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, we had a range of one-point-five percent to fifteen-point-seven percent. That one-point-five percent is the current year, we're only into mid-year, so we really don't have a full picture of this year, but we looked at it. Midpoint of about eight-point-six-seven, a mean of about eight-point-six-three, a median of nine percent. Looking at these percentages tells us that, that the, the properties that were adjacent to this mining operation, Countryside Estates is about a half a mile, the center of it is about a half a mile to the, to the activity of that pit, that the market really had no, reflected no impact from that. A lot of things go into that in terms of the perception of the market. Responsibly managed pits are, are critical. If somebody's running a slipshod pit, then I think that would have an impact. From hearing Ken's testimony, there's a whole lot of regulatory stuff that goes with that, not just on the county level, meeting your compliance, but meeting the state mining levels and all of that. Lot of testing, a lot of bonds going in place to protect people, water quality, well quality, all of that. Perhaps some of the Countryside Estates higher-level appreciations during that timeframe is it isn't Moayak. Moayak tends to be probably one of the more increasing areas in the county, just because it's so proximate to the Virginia line and the development pressure coming into there. But even so, the statistics that we examined and compared, they all bracket and support that there's been no impact from, negative impact from mining activity. Based on that, an analysis of the overall market, the subject property in particular, and upon review and analysis of competitive areas in Currituck County, with existing properties adjacent to mining operations similar to the subject, it's my opinion that the proposed use of the sandlot mine does not endanger public health or safety, would not negatively impact the marketability of adjoining or abutting properties, and is in harmony with the area in which it's located. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Anything from the board?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it.
With that, the applicant arrest. With that, the applicant arrest.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Well, this is a public hearing, so we do have public comment. Ken, I had you sign up for that, Gary Thompson, and Jack Flyt, did, did any of these people need a speaker, or did we just sign up for that? Okay. Come on up. If you would give us your name and...
He was sworn in.
My name is Jack Flyt. I live at 407 Seagull Court in Killdough Hills. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll be real brief in the view of the time. I know these guys in this corner of here get up stupid early in the mornings, I'll be real brief.
Okay.
I'm an operator for TR Equipment, and I just want to speak briefly about the character, Mr. Thompson. I can tell you he's a, a professional, and he is very passionate about his profession. You know, example, he maintains his equipment, you know, a lot of times when people think of, you know, heavy equipment that comes in mine or dark big oily spots on the machines, he does not allow that at all. I know that firsthand, he doesn't allow, allow any kind of fluid leaks from his machines. I was his fuel and oil guy for a little while before he taught me how to run an excavator. In 2018, I retired after 37 years of working in the field of environmental health, I worked with Dare Canny Environmental Health. And I first met Mr. Thompson in 1985 when he was doing site work and installing on-site wastewater septic systems. And then I knew, he was a reputable contractor then, very passionate about his work, personally I've known him for many, many, many years, and I can tell you, he's a fine, upstanding citizen and a fantastic family man. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Gary Thompson? Okay. Is there anyone else that didn't sign up that would like to speak this evening?
I think Lee raised his hand.
I do need to swear you in, there's a bubble right in front of you. If you would place your left hand on that and your right hand in the air. Thank you. You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to be given will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. And I need your name and address for the record as well, sir.
All right. My name is Roy Lee Etheridge Jr. Address is 135 Trenton Lane, Falls Point. And I also own some property directly across the street from what's now the temporary access for the proposed sand mine. Just a few things I'd like, like to bring up. I never, in March, so there was a letter sent out, I was never, I never got my letter, my mom never got her letter, we own property right across the street.
Okay.
And that was March of 2023. First letter I got was in December of '23. I mean, I would've said something at the meeting, nobody was at the meeting, you know, I don't know, nobody was at the meeting, evidently. But I have a bunch of concerns, but I don't wanna shut this down. I just want some, some things to be addressed to maybe better help my situation so I don't feel so blindsided. The, the entrance, since I, I got the letter, across the street, we have a ditch, I don't know if y'all have TVs back there with...
We can see what you're seeing.
The Google Earth.
We see what you...
The one that you have. The Google, yeah, it was... One more couple before that. All right. All right, that's fine. Yeah, so there's a ditch right there, and that leads out to the sound, and most of the property we, we own of the proposed area of that half, and is what I've noticed is when I'm, when I'm out there, I spend all my leisure time out there doing things in nature, everything everybody loves doing in Currituck. So all I hear in those times, as far as noise, somebody was talking about noise earlier and said it wasn't any higher than the highway. I agree, if, if your truck's already going down the highway, but you have 20 trucks coming in and out every day, and they're starting in first gear, going up all the way, and the noise decibels are a lot higher. So it's what I've noticed when I'm over here on my property across the street, on a east wind especially, or a quiet day, that's all I hear is, that's all I hear when it was operating. They haven't done much, but in those couple months where they were digging and hauling out, I could hear the noise from the tractors, the beeping, the beeping, or the backing up on the trucks. And, you know, I don't wanna live across the street. I have plans to build a house across the street, a nicer house than the ones that are there, and rather not have all that commotion going on directly across the street from me. Mr. Elliott proposed that there is a construction entrance, the main entrance paved midway of the property. I'd like it to be considered that maybe we, if we could move that entrance about 100 feet to the south, it wouldn't impact my property across the street as much. And it's a unique piece because of the ditch. That ditch acts like, the sound just goes right through it, right through the water, and that's all you hear, it's like, it's almost as if you're across the street, and when you're out there in the water. So...
Okay. Quick question, when, when those dump trucks, when they break, do some of them use, what is it? Well, no, when they... What's that?
Engine brake.
The engine brake, because when they do an engine brake, that's louder than hell, than crap, so I don't know if, if you hear some of that.
Coming in, oh, you can hear it, and it's the highway.
It's a lot louder than a air brake, yeah.
Not many.
You, you're gonna have a lot more of that, not to mention the pump, you know, if they're going to be dewatering, I don't know how long this project's anticipated to last, 20 years, maybe?
Ten years.
Ten years. Ten years is a long time.
It's a lot of traffic coming in.
If, as a property owner, and I get along with all these people, you know, so it's hard for me to come up here and speak against something when I think I'm friends with these people. Maybe not then. Just wait. With the pump running all the time, there's never any quiet time, you can, you can't hear all the stuff that nature has to offer. So there's just, there's things to, to consider. I'm all about the buffer and everything, my main thing is the entrance. If we can move the entrance, I don't have, you know, any plans.
Then does it become the homeowner's south problem?
No, mainly because there's two businesses right there, and they're commercial businesses. The entrance would be directly across from them.
Okay.
And over here, there's, there's no tree buffer, there's a little ditch where there's some trees, I'm just trying to get them on the other side of these trees, there's all these trees over here.
Jenny, can you, I mean, when he's talking about that, can you point a little bit, or, I mean, I'm having a...
All right.
When you say move the, move the entrance, where now?
Yeah, so right here is, is my entrance to my property.
Okay.
And the proposed entrance is pretty much right across the street.
Okay. And you're talking about moving it where, south?
South of 100 foot.
And the other businesses are across the street then from you, you're saying? Okay.
Yes, sir.
What business, Lee, what business are those?
Owner of Redford Granite Memorial.
Okay, so I thought...
And there's another one, newer home that's just been built, and he runs a business out of that.
But then you're moving the, the, the trucks coming in and out closer to the neighborhood of the south of that, so closer to the homes, and where can you be?
No, I mean, they, they still, they're gonna enter the property closer, but they're not gonna be any closer than all the machines are gonna be digging and everything. And also, you can't see it on this, this view, but it, there's a major curve right here, just past these houses, it's a major blind, blind curve.
Can you point to that again?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, it's north, right, right through here, it curves pretty drastically, and we've had, just in the past two years, say, seven documented instances where people ran off the road. You know, and there's nothing going on around, it's just a highway. People run off the road, they run into the house, one of the, one person ran right into the house, just two weeks ago, my mailbox got taken out, the guy was in the ditch. You know, a couple of years ago, you know, people have been in the highway, they're not supposed to be, stuff like that. There's just a, a blind curve, so the trucks coming out, they're gonna be loaded, they're gonna be pulling out slower.
With traffic going 65 miles an hour probably.
Coming around that curve, the trucker didn't even see them.
Yep.
By the time they're out there. It would give them more of a heads up if they were south, not, not just my stuff, but it would be...
No, I agree. I think you're correct on that.
So...
Okay.
Really all.
All right. Good points. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. I forgot about that curb up there, but he's right about that, there are been... Yes, there's a lot of that right there.
Well, that could happen.
Okay. No, but I'm just...
Like I said, it is a, it's not shown on that.
Mr. Varnell, did you have any rebuttal or anything to say?
No, I, I don't know, we were talking with, with Mr. Thompson just now, just concerning whether or not he's got any issues with it. I was about to say, I think he'd be the best to speak, however. Say your name for the record.
Gary Thompson, owner of TR Equipment Company.
You the applicant, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll let you talk.
Thank you.
We have spent 12 months designing this mine site. We've tried to do the best we could. I've probably attended more mining meetings in this county than anyone through my years, and I always try to take something away. In 2020, the planning board passed a UDO change, they wanted all state mines to be on the highway. They wanted no more large mines on secondary roads. And then the guy took it off the table or whatever, y'all, y'all never voted on it, but that's what I took away from that meeting, some other things that night, but they were trying to get away from one acre ponds all over the place, they prefer a decent mine site, and they wanted it on the highway. And when I found this site, I thought this was perfect. Like I said, we've got a lot of time and effort in designing this. I know Mr. Etheridge, and I invited him to come by and talk to me several times, and he never showed up. I know they got a well survey, he's saying they didn't get any paperwork, I know they got the well survey because somebody wrote all over it and sent it back to us. It was his mother's well survey. So I don't know. We moved the entrance, I was told that he didn't like it across from his house, we moved the entrance to the center of the property, which splits the difference between the curves on the highway to try to make it as safe as we could. That's all I got, I don't know what else. Like I said, we, we've tried to design this to the best of our ability to, to address people's issues. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask him, Mr. Chairman, can I? Would it be, Mr. Thompson, would it be an issue if you did move, I mean, like, and I just, from my day job, know, like you said, where Lee brought up this scenario, I know we've had, you know, would it be an issue, a major issue for y'all to possibly move the, the entrance? South, I guess I should say?
Well, we've already moved it south. See, it was, the old entrance was in front of his house. In fact, there's two, there's two accesses to the property now, but we chose not to use either one of those, we chose to put it right in the center to give the best site triangle for trucks.
For both, both directions.
Incoming, you know, vehicles.
Okay. So the, the, the new proposed entrance is not directly across from his house, is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry.
You said the new, the new, the new, the proposed entrance that you have is not across from his house?
No, sir.
Okay.
The original entrance was.
Mr. Thompson, could you, just to help the board, could you point? The overhead, I think it's the same one that Mr. Etheridge was using. Would you show them?
The mine map.
Right here. So here's your mine site.
Okay.
There's, you see the canal.
There's an existing driveway there, it looks like.
The old one's right there.
So that's where Mr. Etheridge was saying.
Lost it. There you go.
The old one's right there, the new one's basically in the center of the property.
Okay, so it is further south than his house.
I think it's 400 and some feet in each direction to the north and south property line.
Okay.
Mr. Thompson, you, you have done a lot of mines? You, you have developed a lot of mines?
I've been in business for 41 years doing site work and mining.
And have you ever had a, an issue with well contamination or a problem with a well that is in proximity to one of your mines?
No, ma'am. I, I'm pretty sure I was the first person to ever do a hydro geo study in Currituck County. That was very expensive, and it was completed, and it showed no impact areas, and back then, that's what we were, that's what we were told to do. Before that, of course, there was no, there was no studies or anything. Excuse me. Now, y'all have given the option, you can do a hydro study, or you can put up some money in case somebody's well goes bad and help them replace it. So that and the monitor wells take the place of the hydro study that we used to do.
Is that better? I'm asking your opinion.
I'm not an engineer.
Well, I'm just asking your opinion.
And your experience.
According to the hydro study that we did in 2004, we did not damage any wells surrounding the property.
So it's basically the same thing then? You're, you're making an argument that neither's better because they both achieved the same purpose?
Well, I, I, I see what y'all did, you know, you, you put out an option there that you can do this or you can do that, and that's fine. So in this operation, we just chose to do the well bond for the $54,000, I think is what it comes up to.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, we're still...
Okay, Mr. Thompson, real quick, then, how many mines have you done with this type of soil, like it's in the southern end of the county, or has yours been...
How many have I done in this county?
Well, no, with, with that type of soil in the southern end like Currituck has.
I had the Dozier Mine in Jarvisburg.
Okay.
Six acres, the Malco Mine at Point Harbor, 14 acres.
Okay.
I worked at the, the old Bryant Mine in Moayak many years ago. When I was 20 some years old, I worked for Tywater Sand in a large mine in Chesapeake. So I've been, I've been around mining a long time.
All right. Mr. Ellis?
I wanted to address the choice between a hydro geological survey and the use of monitoring wells with a performance guarantee. I've also been involved with one of my clients that had a hydro geo survey done, and he was right, it's a very expensive procedure. But what I noted during that was that it's still a guess. They, they use computer modeling and a few boring samples to try to determine what the curve is of, of the water drop, and how far you have to get away from a mine before the water levels go back up to normal levels. The use of monitor wells kind of negates that guesswork, it's more of a real world measurement. With the monthly sampling, we can look at the groundwater levels rising and lowering according to the season of the year, we can compare those levels according to the proximity of the well itself to the mine, and also compare, compare to base water levels before dewatering ever starts. So it's more of a real world determination, and it gives you a, a much better picture of what... And, uh, it gives you a, a much better picture of what de-watering is doing, um, on the, on the side.
So you're saying this is better?
I agree.
Okay.
So, so if, if, if the monitoring wells show that the water table has gotten too low?
Yes.
Does the mine then stop?
It sure does.
Until the water table comes up, whether it's two days or two months?
We find out what's going on with it. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
That, that monitoring well is gonna be, uh, down to thirty-five feet. Same, uh, same depth as the maximum, uh, depth of that excavation. So, um, if we, if we see a normal water level in that groundwater, uh, monitoring well of, say, ten feet or eight or nine feet, but then we see it drop down to fifteen or twenty feet down, we know something's going on.
And you would, the, the operation would stop then until it came up, or you figure, okay, tell us the dress?
Yes, sir.
If you've ever been on a mine site when the de-watering is going on, the water is pouring through the walls all the way around that, inside of that mine site. Um, in the, in Lower Carrituck, we don't ever dry one out. We don't run a dry pit, we don't drive trucks down in it. We pull the water down, we dig the sand up and stockpile it, we turn the pump off. And at four dollars a gallon for diesel fuel, I love to turn the pump off. You know, it's not like, I mean, that's, that's the truth. You know, why run it anymore when you have to? So we pull it down, we let it come back. The minute you turn the pump up, you can see the water coming up. So it's not like it takes a year for it to slowly trickle back. It's running through the walls of that mine the whole time, and you, you just get used to it and you work around it.
And in addition, the water that's coming out of that sediment pond is going into a ditch, which is on the perimeter of the, of the, uh, permit area. It is going right straight back down into the ground surrounding the excavation. Uh, this mine here is within eight hundred feet of a, of fifteen hundred acres of, of marshland and swamp. It's already wet and is gonna stay wet. So.
Yeah, I told you.
Uh, we're not gonna be drying out any of that. The water comes out and it goes right back in.
Okay. Okay. Um, so I just wanna go back to the driveway, just one second on that. Uh, looking at the map that's in front, the aerial that's in front of us here, there's kind of a, up at the upper end of that, there's a, a light line that's, uh, probably some kind of vegetative berm. Is that appro, and that's approximately across from this, this subject house, Mr. Etheridge's house, or driveway, it looks like. And you're saying the, the, the proposed entrance exit would be just south of that, is that, is that a correct statement? You see what I'm, you see what I'm saying, right where his property line is? It almost lines up, shoots straight across on his south property line?
Talking about that little line.
There's a little line, yeah, in, in the vegetation. And it lines almost perfect with his property line.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. I don't, that's what I'm trying to.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to ascertain.
I don't know.
Cause I'm looking at Google Maps.
That's, that's what I was assuming. And Mr. Etheridge was right here.
Here's the. That's the line right there in Google Maps, and that says tree line.
And that's current access.
I think the current access is actually.
Where you, the mines.
I guess we're trying to figure out, Jane, if that little.
Thirty-one?
No, the current, I think the current access is up here. Where they excavated over here.
Mm-hmm. There's a trailer of the year.
Yeah, they come right up over here.
Okay.
So somewhere right in here.
So ba, based on that map?
Yes.
There's a, there's a measurement on the map that has the property line to the new driveway.
Right.
And I believe it's four hundred and some feet.
Four hundred and sixty.
So obviously, this isn't perfect, this isn't a survey.
Right.
That squiggly line more toward.
I can measure.
Is that the squiggly line right there?
From the property line here.
Hang on.
You can see. That's about four hundred and sixty feet. That would be the, the northern edge of the new driveway, basically at the apron.
Right. Just, just south of the subject property then?
So in this, on this drawing here, where's that little light line at? We think it's like.
Just south of that.
Just south of the property line?
No, just south of that little white line that's on the.
Yeah, she's in there.
Yeah, I mean, the, the little white line, yeah, where is it? That's a little white line, and the new driveway is going.
Right here.
But that's two different lines.
This is.
Let's just go on right in here, but his, his house is right here.
I think the existing.
So the old existing line was from the property.
Right, but there's a measurement from, on the map, there's a measurement that says it's four hundred and sixty feet from there to.
Oh, yeah, I'm talking, I thought that was there right there.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah. It's up the north end of the property.
That's what I'm thinking line was.
So I guess that line's not the road.
One of them's not.
This, that road's not the line.
That we're looking at the other drawing there.
Right there.
This is four hundred and sixty feet to the entrance.
Jenny, can you go back to that previous one we were looking at?
The slide?
Did, did, well, you know, the, the image we were looking at earlier?
Yep.
Just then keep this one, probably go back and forth.
All right.
Okay, you see that little line that's?
Right here?
Yes. Is that the one where you're showing us right now on the other slide?
It's south of that.
Basically, right in line with the property line there, right?
Okay, so is that, was that the old road right there? The old driveway, or is that just a ditch? That's just a ditch or something? That's existing ditch. Okay, okay.
So you're gonna come in south of that ditch with the new entrance exit? So we're all clear?
There's a ditch on both property lines, north and south.
Okay, that's what that line was, was a ditch. I thought it was a road.
The, the proposed entrance is gonna come, um, to, in front of the adjacent property just south of Mr. Etheridge's property. Not across from his.
And we were discussing earlier if you moved it, okay.
But as I said, from a safety standpoint, they put this kind of equidistant between the curves and the road for a maximum site triangle. So from a safety standpoint, having it where it is makes the best for entry and exit, especially coming onto the highway.
And there's no decel lane. Was, there's not a decel lane or anything, was there?
No.
Would that be up to N C D O T as to whether there'll be a decel lane, or have they just not taken a stand on that?
Would be, yeah. I mean, the applicant could potentially request it, but then it would have to be permitted by D O T.
Okay.
There's not one for the other mine, about Foster Forbes.
Yeah, but the decel lane would not affect on the northern end.
Right, they've got a suicide line.
We just pay for the southern.
Right.
Yeah.
There's already a covert in.
I, I, you gotta either come up to the mic or you can't speak from the audience and.
About where the, the arrow is right here, there is already a covert and a, a entrance.
Yeah.
A sign.
Right, there's a for sale sign or something there.
It's, it's, uh, maybe a trucks in the highway sign or something. And that, that's a great spot. It's already got the covert, it's already there. It's just not directly in the middle of the property. It's a little bit further south.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
That existing path has a fifteen inch covert, which is not acceptable to the state of North Carolina now.
Okay.
So we couldn't use it.
All right, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Varnell, anything further from you this evening?
Yeah, thank you guys.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything further for county staff questions? All right, um, we, I still have the public comment open, as everyone's spoken that wished to be heard tonight. All right, seeing no one else, I'll close the public comment. And, uh, Mr. Varnell has nothing else to add, so at this time, I guess it's just deliberation and, uh, action on this agenda.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna say, my, my only, a couple of my concerns is knowing the cost of wells, and if you have to deal with a deeper well and put a heavier pump in there now, and maybe increase electricity for that, three thousand's probably not, from what, all my dealings, I deal with pumps and wells and the cost of that. So if there's issues, I'm not sure that's gonna be sufficient. Um, and then also too, that I'd like to see if they're gonna do that too. I don't know if there's geothermal equipment out, I don't know that, but I wanted to make sure if this verbiage, um, establishes any type of utility well, if you use, I guess, or if that's the word we use for heat pumps or, or something like that, as long as it's not just covering like domestic water supply wells. I mean, that's my concern, because I know the length of the wells, so I'm trying to get them in.
Sir, uh, the U D O specifies in-use well, it doesn't necessarily.
So in-use, so that would cover?
Any well?
Cover any use, whether it's for geothermal or domestic water then?
I'm, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
The well survey.
I'm not sure.
Only specified two uses, drinking water or irrigation.
Right.
So unless that utility use falls under irrigation, you're not gonna capture.
Okay. And that, that was my concern, that's why I was bringing it up.
As to the three thousand dollars, my only takeaway on that is, I agree with you, but I think given the number of wells, the odds of all of them failing, and I think that's, may have been what was alluded to this evening earlier, is that, yeah, that's the money that's set aside, but that doesn't mean one well couldn't be five thousand dollars.
Well, it says three thousand per in-use well, doesn't say.
Correct. That's the amount that's set aside, but my, that doesn't limit it to only three thousand dollars per well, is my point.
Right.
They just use that as a fact.
So, so if somebody's well costs five thousand dollars, it would cover it?
Yeah.
That's what I guess that was my concern.
That fifty-four thousand could be used, correct, to replace one.
So technically, one fifty-four thousand, okay, okay. That, okay, that's, helps me understand that better, okay. Okay.
So, uh, it sounds like you would, if, if this, one of the stipulations you would like to see would be that, um, if there's a well in use for geothermal heating or heating and cooling, that that be incorporated into?
If that in-use covers that, I'm fine with it, but if, I just wanna make sure a well.
Right, but you can put it as a condition.
Well, if, if, then I would like to, I mean, if, if somebody makes a motion, I would like to see that condition added just to make sure that in the event there is a geothermal well, and somebody's got on a ten-foot or twelve-foot and it's affected, that is covered as well. Okay, that, okay.
All right, fair enough.
All right, that's, that, okay, well, that covered my concerns.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, move to approve P V twenty-four seventeen, the Sandlot Mine, because the applicant has given progress, the post-use is in conformance with the U D O and needs the special permit review standards of the U D O. Um, the board may, uh, add, uh, conditions, so I'm gonna add the following conditions. Um, one, the sand mine operator shall guarantee replacement of the water supply of the eighteen wells within the fifteen hundred foot of the property to that equal quality and quantity of the in-use well. A performance guarantee in the form of a cash deposit shall be established in the amount of three thousand dollars per in-use well, fifty-four thousand total per the Unified Development Ordinance, uh, and for use for other wells. Does that cover it? Nice.
I'm, I'm sure that would cover that then, okay.
Two, Lynn Van, uh, Loret Trust LLC would provide a hundred percent performance guarantee to repair possible damage to homeowners' well, water well systems in the nine additional development parcels located within a two hundred foot radius of the Sandlot excavation area. Three, the applicant shall meet all current U, Unified Development Ordinance use specific standards for extractive industry. Four, the special use permit shall be valid for the same permit period as the state of North Carolina mining permit, not to exceed ten years from the date of issuance. Five, the existing gravel driveway within the hundred foot setback shall not be used for mining equipment or hauling. Um, and, uh, the use will not endanger the public health or safety as, as testified by the expert, Mr. Elliott, with respect to state and federal regulations and expect, uh, inspections, while monitoring monthly and noise mitigation measures. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, as testified by Mr. Tate in his study of, of similar communities within the county. Three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other adopted plans, including Land Use Goal Two, Land Use Policy Two Point Six, Environmental Goals One and Three, and Environmental Policy Three Point Two and Three Point Three. And the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate school, public school facilities with no impact in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I think she said two hundred when it should've said two thousand.
Excuse me, two thousand.
Thank you, good catch. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, unanimous, thank you. Next up, new business, item one, resolution authorizing execution of Kroger opioid settlement, approving second supplemental agreement for additional funds.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is required, um, to be in place by August twelfth. It is because, um, Kroger is joining in the settlement for the opioid litigation.
Okay.
Um, so this resolution is basically joining in that settlement and also allowing for an amendment to the supplemental agreement, um, which again is adding Kroger as an additional party.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board? A motion for approval, please.
Motion for approval?
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, next up, a resolution calling a special advisory referendum for the one-quarter cent sales, uh, county sales and use tax levy. This is something we've discussed as a board before, to add on a quarter cent sales tax to the ballot.
Yep, that's right. Um, so this resolution is required by statute, um, which would then require, then it would get to the board of elections, and they would be required to publish notice in the newspaper, and then it would get on the ballot in this next election in November. And the specific language that will be on the ballot is listed in the resolution, which is required by statute, or the, the form of the question, rather, um, either for or against local sales and use tax at the rate of one quarter percent, in addition to all other state and local sales and use taxes. So this is just to get that question on the ballot.
Okay, and for those that maybe stuck around to this point in the meeting or watched it, the board discussed this, uh, at some length, uh, while we were going through our tax increase and, uh, is, is a way to help offset for, uh, increasing future taxes on property taxes and this, uh, in large part will affect the tourists, um, as they are the biggest spenders in our county. So they help pay a big chunk of taxes, uh, should this be implemented, you know, by the public this year. All right, any other questions about that? Motion for approval, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, next up, a resolution authorizing eminent domain action on fifteen fifty-nine Sanford Road. This is the laughing goal that's sticking out in the.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so a lot of us know this structure as the laughing goal. It's located at one five five nine Sanford Road. It is within the public trust area of the beach. Um, and prior to this short session of the North Carolina General Assembly, Carrituck County was not listed as a county that was allowed or authorized to use their eminent domain power to allow for access throughout the public trust area of the beach. Pursue it to this last, um, short session, we now have that authority. So we were kind of waiting for that authority, and now this resolution authorizes me to move forward and file an action. Well, first, there's steps to be taken, but to move forward and give them notice that we're gonna file action and then file an eminent domain action, just to get an easement to basically remove that structure so that individuals can traverse the beach and not have to worry about high tide coming in, having to go around, um, inland, um, to get around. So this resolution authorizes that eminent domain action.
Okay, well, since it's my dirt, I guess I'll, uh, I'll move for approval on that one. Have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next up, board appointments. We have the A B C Board. Uh, um, Mr. Alex Parker put his name in the hat, he, uh, just by way of, uh, He, just by way of who he is, he lives over in Corolla, so it's been a while since we've had someone besides me on the ABC floor from Corolla, but has owned a myriad of businesses and must just submitted his name to replace Sybil O'Neill, who is coming off in September. We want to have another meeting before then, so this is.
And he's okay with that, traveling to North Carolina?
Yep, yep, yep. He's over here all the time, anyway. It's like everybody else, you've got to come over here to go to the doctor or do whatever. So I would like to recommend him or nominate him and make a motion to have him. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we have to reappoint Chris Bell to serve for a second three-year term. So I'd like to nominate him to.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, opioid advisory board, initial appointments. And to appoint Commissioner Jarvis to serve as an ex officio board representative. And we have, I guess we can just do them as a slate?
Yeah, I just really will, real quickly say that all of the members that are on page 351, we're all members of the task force, which met last year and of course presented to us in January. The one that I'm waiting on, I have not heard from, so I will move forward at the next meeting with that District 2 appointment. But I'm very excited about this and they are, too, and I appreciate their willingness to serve.
Okay, so would you like to go ahead and?
I will move for approval for the slate of candidates for the board.
Second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is the rec advisory board. Andy Hennecker to fill an unexpired term ending January 31st, 2026, and that is Kevin's.
Yeah, Bobby Jeller Mine, he had a resign, I believe he moved.
Okay.
And I may be wrong on that, so, but Andy coaches, so.
Good dude.
Solid.
Solid, all right. So you're going to make that motion to put him on?
So moved.
All right, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up, consent agenda. Any questions?
Chairman, I would like to see item C pulled out from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Brief discussion.
All right, let's do that. What is it about that that's challenged you this evening?
Okay, so specifically with the June 24th minutes on page 373 of the electronic package, the move for approval of the county budget is presented, it reads, with the inclusion of 420,000 in additional funds for teacher assistance, I would like to see something stronger referring to the teacher assistant line item, right? Something that assigns that specific monetary value to that.
Well, we talked about, yeah, specific for that. I think we could designate that, right?
And that's what I, so that language of designated, I'd like to be included in the minutes. That's it. Because right now, it just seems like we added 400,000 because of the.
Yeah, the additional 400 to 950 designated funding for providing for teacher aides.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because I mean, we did agree to that, you're right.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right.
With that, I move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Get a motion to adjourn.